All right. Everybody can stand. Make your flags. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Auditor, do we get a roll call?
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Bozick.
Present.
Councilmember Brickner.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jessen.
Here.
Councilmember Pepperett. And Councilmember Sims.
Present.
Six present.
All right. Approval of minutes of regular meeting, regular council meeting for October 26, 2021.
So, ma'am?
Second.
Motion is second to approve discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes for October 26, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or pose same sign. We get the first reading, Madam Auditor.
Notice taxpayers have proposed additional appropriations. Notice this hereby given, the taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet at the Memorial Opera House located 104 Indiana Avenue in Valparaiso, Indiana on December 7, 2021, at 5:30 PM to consider the following appropriation adjustments to county budgets for the year 2021 and to transact any further business which might come before the council. General fund and sheriff, perf $120,000, federal DOC budget, food and groceries, a reduction of $120,000. Sheriff accident report fund, 1101, training and ed, 3,500, other equipment, 8,400. CCD, motor vehicles, 42,100. County user fee, pre-trial diversion fund, legal, 5,000. County user fee sheriff fund, salaries, $2,043 FICA, $157 perf, $229 sheriff, overweight vehicle fund, motor vehicles, 43,100. Public safety data tech fund, other equipment, 22,000. Forfeiture pass-through fund, legal, 260,000. Distributions, $30,000. COVID ICJI grant fund, personnel supply services, 17,700, other supplies, 6,700. Other equipment, 21,400. And the COVID ISDH grant fund, hourly, 144,514, FICA, 11,048. The COVID IFA safety grant fund and inter-fund transfer of 550,000 to 27, and local roads and bridges grant fund by two minutes, $804,000. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have the right to be heard their own. The appropriation adjustments as finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance upon receipt of a certified copy of the actions taken. And where applicable, the DLGF will make a writ of determination as to sufficient sticking funds to support the appropriation signed with your VADA data report, County published November 24, 2021, in the Chesapeake Journal. And that concludes first reading.
Thank you, Madam Auditor, and welcome everybody to the Memorial Opera House and the county council. Those who've never got to join one of our meetings, we're in it now. It can be boring at times. We're gonna go right through it like we normally do, and at the end we'll have a presentation regarding the Memorial Opera House project, and then we'll also open the floor for the general public for comments on our ARP plan. So, sit back and relax and enjoy the county council meetings. First up is Commissioners, CCD.
Scott's job.
Scott's job. Oh, McDonald's. Scott, is McClure's here? So, Scott, I know I talked to the sheriff, I mean, it's under Commissioners, but this is from the sheriff's office and moving the $42,100 to motor vehicles. But, talking to the auditor and I talked to the sheriff, this would affect the budget that we just approved, is that right? So, if we could just maybe re-add this in January, Sheriff, if that's okay? That way they don't have to resubmit the budget for 2022? So, okay, perfect. So, if I could...
Motion to table it.
I would say deny it, not table it. Motion deny it, I'm going to just be applying to that. I think that's better. So, deny it for now, and then he'll resubmit it in January. Is that Harold?
I can add the weight, six point nine.
Okay, that's fine. There's motion of second to table it, we'll go with that, if you're okay with it. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, 40 court. Looks like there's a transfer $400 from legal to interpreter. Fund shortage for interpreter line item, there's motion of second. Any discussion? All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you, Merry Christmas. We have all kinds of fun here. Highway. Looks like we got a couple transfers and additional. So, highway fund transfer, $20,000 from aggregates to overtime. Transfer needed to finish paying overtime for the rest of the year. I can keep going if you guys would like. Local roads and bridges grant fund, there's an additional, $804,000 by two minutes. Reason, additional money needed to pay invoices for community crossing, matching grant, paving projects. Another transfer, $200,000 from contractual services to by two minutes. Reason, transfer of funds needed to pay invoices for community crossing, matching grant, paving projects. So, you got it?
I'll make a motion for all three.
There's a motion, a couple seconds on the floor for both transfers and additional. There you are. Right, so...
And that money needed to finish paying overtime for the year, that'll get us through a little bit. You gonna snow come, so it's not going to, but it's...
I think, Rich, we had a record-setting year in paving, if I'm close to it, if not a record-setting year, so I appreciate the work of the department and gladly incorporate the money to finalize some work that's been done. You guys did a great job.
Any further questions? All right, Madam Auditor, can we get a roll call on the two transfers and the additional?
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yep.
Councilmember Graham.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
E-911. It's like E-911 Foundation Fund, there's a transfer. $4,500 training education to uniforms and clothing. Reason, transfer needed to purchase uniform shirts for admin and dispatch. In fact, for January 1, 2022, staff will require to wear an E-911 department attire.
In the spirit of the holiday, I'll move, I'll make the motion, the transfer.
There's a motion and a second for the transfer. Is that, yeah. I like it. Yes, absolutely, thank you. Further discussion?
Is Sunday Fridays will be casual days, is that what it's only Monday through Thursday?
Other questions, discussion? All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Yes, thank you, Tony.
Yes, Merry Christmas, stick around with that hat. Prosecutor. County user fee, pre-trial diversion fund, there's an additional, $5,000 to legal. Reason, need to additional appropriations for legal line item. We have outstanding bills to pay and more in the foreseeable future. I did talk to Gary also. They, I think most of the staff down is Indian, some training, I believe. So, he does have somebody here representing him, but it seems pretty simple.
I'll make a motion for the additional.
Motion. Second, discussion?
Yes, that's right. We just went through budget, and this is an additional. Was this something that was not expected?
I mean, it's just a transfer from the pre-trial diversion fund, so it's not necessarily extra, but it was just unexpected bills.
Well, it's not really an additional, it's a transfer.
It is 2021, not 2022.
It is an additional. So, they just said for the bills for the rest of the year. I mean, obviously, there's some outstanding bills that need to be paid. Yep. Any further questions, discussion? Can we get a roll call on the additional?
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick. Six to zero.
Thank you. Health Department. Health Department Fund, there's a transfer, $10,000 from furniture fixtures over $100 to legal. Reason, cover additional attorney fees incurred due to COVID. I can keep going if you want. Looks like there's an Indiana State Department of Health, looks like fund, an additional, $144,514 to hourly, and $11,048 to FICA. Reason, appropriation needed for mass vaccination clinics, awaiting another reimbursement from the state. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second on the transfer and additional, discussion.
Just a question on the legal, the transfer to legal fund and explanation, cover additional attorney fees incurred due to COVID. Can you just expand on that a little bit?
It covers Dave Hollenbeck's cost and the fact that he's been working a lot with us in trying to get along the issues we solve with COVID.
There are attorneys, yeah.
Yeah. With the mask mandates and different things that we have put into the year, he's been putting extra time to help us with the... Providing guidance, we've had a lot of issues, as you obviously know.
So, is that, that's over and above his normal contracted amount for the year?
Yes. Yes. It's not you over them.
And is that contract based on hours per week, or...
It's hours per, hours total, right? We have a base contract and then an hourly, so it's two different ones. And actually, he came today and he said 7,700 for coverage, so it wouldn't need to be a whole $10,000.
So, does he provide some sort of number of hours that that's allocated toward?
Yes, he gives us a breakdown. Explanation, very good.
Any further?
Yeah, it says waiting another reimbursement. Are we still waiting for reimbursements from old ones from the state? Are you guys getting them in, is there delays on those, or just the...
We've been getting some of them, but yeah, still waiting on this. Yes, there's some delay.
Further questions? Discussion. Can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor, on the transfer and additional? Because you only need 75, right?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven. So, who made the motion of second, they want to amend their motion?
Yes, I'll amend the motion.
To make...
Second, I agree with you.
Motion of second to amend the transfer to 7,700, is that correct? Any further discussion then, to amendments? We get a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Councilmember Graham.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick. And Councilmember Brickner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
EMA, EMA General, on the transfer, $500 in telephone and internet services to other supplies, reason to cover non-line item expenses to the end of the year. Make the motion.
Second.
Motion, a couple seconds, discussion. No, I saw it, there he is.
He's coming down.
Discussion, none? All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. IT. Transfer, $11,000 from salaries to data processing equipment. $375 from data processing equipment to maintenance agreements. Reason, unanticipated deficit caused by remote authentication fees.
If I can make a change, though, coffers are empty and the needs are yet many. I spoke with the auditor's office today, just to make sure I wouldn't regret this and cause a shortfall later. I would like to transfer $45,000 from salaries into our equipment budget.
Into what?
Our equipment budget. Forty-five.
You want to make that 11 to 45,000? What's that, Sylvia?
I was wondering, what will that lead to then, though?
That'll lead me just to no salary plus about $3,000 efficient.
Well, if you're comfortable with that.
I am comfortable. I have a lot of trust in the auditor's office.
We all do. So, with that, I mean, $45,000 at the end of the year in December, I mean, you'll be able to spend that and get contracts or purchase that stuff?
I do. E-911 has a need for new computers for dispatch, and I can use that money for that.
So...
That'll be spent tomorrow.
So, you're using all 45,000 for computers?
Yeah, the computer bill comes to 48.
What were you using the 11,000 for?
Update other equipment. That'll just happen next year.
So, he's asking for 45,000 from salaries to data processing equipment plus the 375 data processing equipment to maintenance agreements. That's the request, I don't think there was a motion or ever, so... Just first, purchase of...
Motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
There's a motion of the second, further discussion? I mean, this is from salaries from some openings you had, so you've got some available salaries. You're gonna use it to purchase needed equipment? And you're saying for E-911, you're gonna buy some laptops, is that what you said?
Well, it's desktops.
Desktops, I'm sorry.
Why are we taking $375 out of data processing and put it in maintenance agreements, only to put 45,000 back in the data processing?
It's 50/50 how you want to do it. That line item, that covers our duo license. What duo does is for those who are allowed to work from home, they log in and then they have to press something on their phone, logs them in. That's for every user, that might cost money. And it's a life-changing thing every month. It depends how many people use the service, how many log in at that time. We were anticipating $375 to pay off that. We need 450, that's my next ask, is to change that to 450. We could either take that directly from salaries and move it into that line item, or we just... There's still money in my equipment budget to go over that.
So, you're asking us to change the 375 to 450? All right, so, the request is now to change the, I think I can stay with it. There's the first and the second, they want to amend that to 450 from data processing equipment to maintenance agreements? So, the motion, the second, agreed to amend it to 450, for the second transfer, 450 from data processing equipment to maintenance agreements. Further discussion? All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Motion and all its amendments pass. Sheriff General Fund, an additional...
Let's have the crew.
Stay out, let's bring them, cheers. Perfect amount. Additional, $120,000 to perf. Reason, to cover sheriff pension shortage in 2021 due to decreased revenue from paper services and court fees. And keep going, if you want, Sheriff Accident Report Fund, additional, 3,500 to training and education, 8,400 to other equipment, reason to cover the cost of training and education for vehicle extraction and forensic data and IV system for, to cover the cost of a new vehicle, entertainment extraction and forensic data. Time twisted there, that's the second additional.
I'll make a motion for the first two.
There's a motion of second on the first two additions, discussion? I guess I do, Sheriff, with the loss of revenue, paper service, and court fees, is this something that we're gonna see continue, that we're gonna have to find another home maybe for...
In 2022, it's coming out of a different...
Is this the federal? So, this was anticipation of this? Further discussion on the two additionals? Can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor, on the first two additionals?
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Six to zero.
All right. Sheriff County User Fee Fund, there's an additional, $2,043 to salaries, $157 to FICA, $229 to perf. Reason, cover the cost of increase in salaries for comptroller, finance administrator, and support services director. Form 144, $11,474 to $14,943 comptroller. $20,600 to $30,415 finance administrator, assistant comptroller. Zero to $13,267 support services director. Change the title of assistant comptroller to finance administrator. Reason, for comptroller, finance administrator, assistant comptroller, and support service director position. Carry on? Sheriff overweight vehicle fund's additional. Is there a motion, or...
Why don't you tell us what's going on with that, or do you need a motion first? I'd like to understand what is going on.
Are we gonna discuss them?
Well, I talked to most of you, not all of you, I didn't get ahold of Ms. Jessen. And I understand some, I had some support when I talked to them, but I talked to all of you, I know. And I know what some of the concerns were. I don't think anybody said that they objected to what I'm proposing. I understand that you're doing a survey. I don't know when that survey's gonna, we all don't know when it's gonna be done, and there's no assurances that whatever this survey says, you're gonna have the finances, the monies to deal with those, whatever that survey is. But, what I'm talking about here is two separate issues. We're not, I'm not talking about a pay raise for employees. I would have presented this before the budget, but I was told basically normally you don't do this before the budget because you gotta wait to see what you're gonna give all the employees this year, based on the bridge fund and whatever excuse, whatever, not excuse, whatever reason you had, there wasn't any increase. So, now that's why I'm here now. And I'm basically restructuring two very important departments in my sheriff's office. One oversees 11 employees, does the sheriff's sale. Almost every county in the state, the sheriff's department doesn't do the sheriff's sales. We do, and they hired an outside company to do it, but we do it. That's individual does it, plus she's in charge of records and civil bureau. So, she deals with other departments every day, plus her own employees. So, that's the reason for the change of the title and the money that I think that she, because of her responsibilities, is entitled to.
Which person are you talking about, assistant comptroller? Not a main, but the...
I'm talking, not, what I'm talking about with the sheriff's sales is the support services director. Okay, and then the other two girls that are sitting close to me right now, so, they oversee $13 million budget, plus I'm gonna project, and you all know, I'm bringing in next year in addition to 2.1 million, that's almost $15 million that they oversee, plus all of the responsibilities that they have. And again, I'm restructuring two departments, and I'm not asking you for the money. I've worked it out where I'm moving monies around in different line items that I have to offset those increases. And I think that's important for you to know. And I understand your concerns, because you have different departments you have to deal with, but I think this is two separate, completely separate issues. And I just hope you appreciate that, like I appreciate what you have to do.
So, these are increases, these are promotions, so how do I look at it?
I look at it as a restructuring of two departments, and then giving them the compensation that they do based on the responsibilities that they have.
Thank you.
Sheriff, so in these two positions, and I know this is just part of their salary coming out of this particular fund. So, in one of the positions, it's basically a $3,500 raise, and the other one is close to $10,000 raise?
Yes.
And are those amounts in addition to the premium pay that all county employees will get for 20?
I think it's two separate, it's two separate, two separate things, because what you're giving them as a stipend isn't part of their salaries, you're just giving $4,000, which is nice, from COVID money. Yes, so to answer your question, it's two separate things.
And have we gone through, and I know that, or assume that job descriptions have changed, and has that information been provided or presented, or...
Well, Sheriff, you know, when we tell everybody to turn the budgets in, yes, we tell them to turn in, but we have, the last couple years, turned in the same budgets, but like the form was, if you have any special requests, put them on there. So, I mean, to me, this, it seemed like it would have fit because we did give some special raises out, we did, you know, go through all those special requests, certainly didn't grant them all, but we did grant a few. Definitely would have made sense, you know, to do this a month, month and a half ago. I appreciate what you're doing here, you know, from my perspective, I mean, you're always fighting for your employees. And it seems like we're getting in a more competitive environment right now, you know, for, to retain, you know, to attract and retain, you know, the best, and that's something we want to do.
And I want to keep them, because I'm hearing, and I'm not putting anybody in the spot, but I'm hearing something, they're looking for, some of them are looking for other jobs that pay comparable. And I'll be honest, if I lose any of those three, I'm in a lot of trouble. I mean, for what they do for me regarding every day is considerable. And I think the one thing that, and I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate that, but we've worked hard to, I mean, these girls worked hard to get that 2.1 million dollars. I mean, that wasn't this company in DC, that was us putting that together and presenting it to them, but they just took it and then dropped it off to somebody else, and they got it approved. And that's, so, you know, I just can't hard, I just can't overemphasize, I cannot lose these people. I mean, and they need to, they need to know that, so, that's why I'm here.
I understand. And speaking of the Wade study that we're doing, that this council has talked about for years, and we're now in the middle of, you know, we tried to hold our spending this year to the best we could, we used some other resources to give out some pretty significant, you know, premium pay and stipends. I don't think the will of this council is to get it back and say, oh, we can't afford it. If that's, that study comes back and says that people are underpaid, everybody's underpaid, I think you can tell by the history of this council so far, we've given out an average of 3.5, 3.4 percent raises every year. We want the best and the brightest, and we've been paying them that, we've been giving them raises that reflect that, we believe in that. So, this Wade study, even if this Wade study came back, in my opinion anyways, and said that everybody's paid exactly, or everybody's overpaid, to me, I would be saying, well, then we're doing our job, let's keep them, you know, where they belong, or even paid, you know, at the top of the market, and we'll continue to give those raises to keep them there. So, I don't, we didn't set out on this Wade study just to ignore it, I mean, at all.
Is the Wade study going on, it's moving forward? We should have, we should have some results next year, correct?
The whole point would be to have it rolling into budget session, absolutely. I mean, they jumped on it, I think, before we even finished the budget session, there was a, there was a cartload into our office for all the departments to fill out, all the departments filled out the request. It's on its way, and I would hope by summertime, we would be able to have that information back and begin to apply that during budget session next year. And that was, you know, one of the reasons, I know you brought up the bridge rate, but one of the reasons we've kind of held back on the spending this year, and I think we did a great job, is we want to make sure we continue to be in a position to take care of our employees.
But Sheriff, this money comes out of your budget, it's not coming out of the general fund, correct? So, it really doesn't hurt our fund. Just wanted to make sure that's noted.
I think that's important to understand.
Is the support services director not making anything now? It says 0 to $13,000, are they just getting paid out of another budget? So, are they getting an increase as well, what are they making now? Or is it just a $13,000 increase? Is that what you're asking?
So, there's a request in front of you, there hasn't been a motion or a second. So there's a request in front of you, there hasn't been a motion or a second. So I'll entertain him, the motion on that, or for the lack of any motion, we'll move on. Sheriff County User Fee Fund, there's an additional 144. Lack of motion or a second, that request will die. Sheriff, I'm confident it'll be back at the beginning of the year. So Sheriff Overweight Vehicles Fund, there's an additional request for $43,100 to motor vehicles. Reason to cover cost of new truck and equipment for the overweight vehicle.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is second on the floor for the additional. Discussion. No discussion. We get a roll call on this additional.
Councilmember Rebus?
Yes.
Councilmember Bosick? Councilmember Breckner?
Yep.
Councilmember Graham?
Yeah.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Sixty zero.
Jail, Jail General Fund, transfer $65,000 from salaries to overtime. Reason to cover the cost of overtime for jailers to cover short shifts. Partial reimbursement through the ICJI COVID grant. Make it go in jail. County Corrections Fund, transfer $22,000 from tires and tubes to household embedding supplies. Reason to cover the cost of supplies for inmates due to COVID. Public Safety Data Tech Fund, additional $22,000 to other equipment. Reason to cover cost of new equipment and software to extract forensic data from cell phones. That's $5,000 in that request. Also cover the cost of equipment installation of LPRs at Highway 149 and US Route 6, $17,000 of that portion. Finally, transfer $10,500 from data processing equipment to furniture fixtures over $100. Reason to cover cost of the new chairs from jail. So there's three transfers and additional, just right off in front of you.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is second on the floor. Discussion. You asking me? LPR, the license plate reader? No, Sheriff's, we're behind. Sheriff, um, the L, the LPRs, license plate readers on Highway 149 and Route 6. Can you maybe elaborate on the reason that we're going there? Are the only ones we still have up on Route 30 East? I mean, where have we gone with this? Do we have cameras up over there? Do you have any cameras up?
Yeah. You guys approved it, it's at Meridian and 6.
They're literally, they're just reading license plates as they go by? Storing that information? Are we storing that information?
Yeah, it's being stored and being shared.
Why 149, Route 6?
Well, it's just, it's part of the overall plan. It just, we're not, we obviously are having some difficulty securing the cameras. There's just a backlog in the cameras. The next one is after that, it won't go in front of you. It's gonna be Indian Boundary and, um, Indian Boundary and 49. And then we've got some, we've got like 30 locations ultimately.
Basically, my understanding is that basically the plan for public safety in Porter County.
Well, absolutely. It's gonna be the best thing, probably the most important thing you've ever done. You know, I mean, if you haven't done a serious crime or committed a crime, if you don't sell drugs, you guys don't have anything to worry about.
It's a little more than drugs.
It's not speeders, it's not traffic. Something like that. It's being put up, they're all through LaPorte right now, they're all through Lake County. They're all through Indianapolis. ITIS just funded probably $5 million, we think, that they're gonna put in. And hopefully we can get part of some of that. Most of those are going on the major highways.
So with that, again, when I asked about 149 and Route 6, I mean, when you say there's 30 locations, how are you choosing those locations?
Well, we don't, there's not an analytical study, but we're looking at traffic. And, you know, we know certain crimes that are committed. And we did six in Meridian, basically because of a beta site, we just wanted to work it out within that. NIMSCO, the vendors, there was a lot of moving parts. Now we got those all placed, everything's in place. All we need now is the cameras. So if you had, and let's say you had a, a shooting in Velt Brasel. And we know they went north on Campbell, and they made, we know that they went left, we can track them. And unless they, they left the area, this information would go into a nationwide database in El Paso, Texas. So everywhere that plate would go, we would get, we would basically track the plate. So it's just obviously another tool for law enforcement to use to track, you know, not your common, you know, everyday citizen, just go and work or something. It's, if you commit, you commit serious offense.
What protects the everyday citizen from not being tracked from an officer that wants to look it up? I don't know how it works, so I'm just asking, is there privacy protection?
You're not, you're not, you're only tracking something if you're, you have to, like your plate, I mean, you don't track it only if you commit a crime. Then we, we, we would contact the database to find out where you've been. That's basically it. I mean, it's not, it's real time in a sense, but it's not real time. So it's just a tool that we would use to, to, you know, I thought, we kind of covered all this before when we got it all approved, but
Yeah, I wasn't at that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, if you look it up, you'll see what police departments have been doing, basically. I mean, Chicago PD's been using them for years. And they're mainly tracking gangs and drug dealers.
This is more not a little traffic, like run stop, light, 105 over, it's not gonna track that.
It's nothing to do with traffic.
Your plate number, it was a chat deduction, and they say the plate number has XYZ in it. We can plug that into the, that database, and then when it goes through an intersection, and it shows a hit. That, that partial plate went through this intersection. So then we're tracking six in Meridian that went through there, our next one was six in 49, so if we don't pick it up there, then we know they turned before or they got there.
We have probably amber alerts, silver alerts in the state police, probably once a day. That the state police, this would actually assist that too.
We can pull up and say, so, five minutes, I know with Chicago PD's, a lot of that, in the red light, all that, these aren't those. This is strictly a license plate, it's a tracking plate, it's a
How, how long have we had the ones of at Meridian and Route 6?
Five months.
Or me?
Five months.
And, and I, I understand that's a short period of time, that we got something material from them, or that you could explain?
Yeah, we've used it for several investigations. Even from here to LaPorte, Lake County's used it, and that's just one intersection. But we'll, you know, vision, think about this, if we're talking about, Sylvia's talking about protecting your county and keeping it safe. You know, we know where the drugs are coming in. We know where they're going to Chicago and how they're being transported from Chicago to us. You know, we, we're working with portage because what we'd like to do is build a virtual wall between us and different areas, you know, so we, we can better track. And we're talking mainly drug de, drug dealers. So I mean, what better way to protect us? Protect portage, protect portage, you protect Val, we protect the county. Because they're, they're kind of the buffer for us right now.
Mr. Sheriff, I'm gonna say it is a outstanding investment for the county. You're just, from what experience I have with it, I think it, it's money spent wisely for public safety in El Paso. So, just, Sheriff, with the council.
I, I think Sheriff, from the conversations prior when this was discussed, there was, there was definitely some apprehension on it. I don't think that the questions were the same before. There was a motion, second on the floor, I believe, so. Further discussion on all the? Three transfers and the additional? If not, we get a roll call, Madam Auditor.
Yes, Councilmember Bosick?
No.
Councilmember Breckner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rebus?
No.
No. So we have, motion passes forward to.
Thank you. Federal prisoner, DOC, there's a, a general fund reduction in front of you, $120,000 for food and groceries.
Make a motion next up.
Cover sheriff's pension shortage in 2021.
Sir.
Motion is second on the floor for the reduction. Can we get a roll call on the reduction?
Yes. And Councilmember Breckner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bosick?
Yes.
Sixty zero.
Did we do, there's something wrong on there?
We don't vote on all of those transfers in addition?
It has.
I'm sorry, okay, thanks.
You guys have it.
My bad. I'm sorry.
And just to clarify, I was only voting no on those, personally. I would have voted yes on everything else. I would like to see it, yeah.
Yeah, Sheriff, I think that's probably a good idea, a few of us to come over there and maybe look at the, understand the layout of, you know, what your plans are.
Just playing privacy, that's what I'm calling it.
I voted the same, for the same reason. I, I wanna understand a little bit more on what your plans are, location, you talked about. You know, maybe the drug flow that we're all, you know, privy to, and maybe, you know, just explain to us, make a few of us maybe a little more comfortable on what the, the plan is moving forward. Thank you, Sheriff. So, um, Stormwater Management, Keep the Bridge Fund. Transfer $500 from Culver's other supplies, reason to purchase shelving units for equipment at South Haven Garage. Keep going, transfer $3,750 from Culver's data processing equipment and purchase small board for meetings and iPads for board members. Plan Commission Fund, transfer $9,000 from boards to data processing equipment. $6,000 consulting data processing equipment, reason to purchase a smart board for meetings and iPads for board members. Stormwater Fund, transfer $5,000 from training and education to data processing equipment. Reason to purchase smart board for meetings and iPads for boards and members. So there's a, a shared purchase. It's like between the three funds to purchase the, the smart board for meetings and iPads for board members.
Make a motion on all the transfers?
There's a motion on all the transfers and a second discussion.
I think the smart boards are really expensive, so it's, I don't know how many iPads are given, but smart board's very expensive, right? $15,000 or something?
Yeah, um, I went up, I, we finally got the quote back, and it's about $6,000 for the smart board, but the other equipment to go along with it, it comes out to about $9,500, I think it was.
Why are all the board members getting iPads? We don't even have iPads.
They're gonna be used, I know. They're gonna be used for all of the board meetings. We have, we have situations where you come into the Plan Commission or PCA or other board meetings, and the, excuse me for a second, petitioner wants to use the visual equipment. So they'll put in their computer, and the Plan Commission then ends up seeing what the petitioner wants them to see on the computers. What we're trying to do in this situation with the iPads is they'll have access to the GIS information, so they can sit there while looking at the petitioner's presentation. Also zoom in on GIS, get to the parcel that they want to, look at it. And also have our staff reports available to them. We're trying to get away from paper.
That sounds like a great thing for us to do, as commission, council, all should be at our table that we need it, right? Wouldn't that make more sense to just put them in that room?
You want to contribute?
Sheriff, it's charged. I was just asking, I mean, it would be, what you're saying would be nice.
Yeah, that is a great idea. I mean, we're trying to get away from paper, but we always have paper in front of them, but I didn't, we had a few incidences where we didn't get it in front of them. I didn't realize that. And so we're just trying to get rid of all the paper. This way they'll have access to our files that we have, plus GIS and everything, and be able to zoom in and be able to see all of these cases.
I'm with you. Look at this. That's our paper, yeah.
So, I mean, the suggestion came through the, I mean, Scott and Florin are returning, I'm discussing this, and we just felt it was a great idea to move forward with that. As far as the smart board is, I mean, we have plenty of meetings with engineers and groups, and they're displaying right now, where it's like, we're at, we're spread out all across the office and everything like that. It'd be kind of nice to have, since we have a conference room, be able to have a video conference right there in our conference room, where all the engineers or myself, or whoever, we're dealing with, all in the same room, and we're all discussing. We're just trying to upgrade and get into today's world.
Further discussion on the transfers? No? All in favor of the transfers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Go the same sign.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thanks. Weights and Measures, transfer $4,400 from training and education to uniforms and clothing. $150 from training and education to shop supplies, $150 from training and education to furniture fixtures over $100. Reason to cover the cost of clothing, new equipment, and office furniture.
Make a motion on the transfers?
Motion is second on the transfers. Discussion. All in favor of the transfers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Go the same sign. Thank you. Extension Office. Extension, Extension Service General Fund, transfer $6,000 from hourly to training and education. As a result of lean labor pool, we have not been able to fill all the part-time positions. Another transfer, $2,000 from trial and furniture fixtures over $100. Reason in-person meetings have been reduced to COVID health concerns.
Sir.
Couple of transfers. Is motion a second on the transfers?
Yeah.
Discussion. No discussion, all in favor on the transfers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Go the same sign.
Motion carries.
And you? Auditor, Auditor General Fund. Form 144, up to $26.50 per hour, part-time. Reason established hourly, hourly rate for part-time person. For Orphanage or Pass Through Fund, an additional $260,000 to legal. $30,000 of distribution. Reason, court order distributions through year end 2021. COVID, ICJC, ICJI, Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, an additional $17,700 to overtime, $6,700 to other supplies, $21,400 to other equipment. Reason, reimbursement of claims received through grant. Need appropriation established in Fund 8903, allowing transfer to grant fund of claims previously paid. COVID, IFA, Indiana Finance Authority, Safety Awareness, Coronavirus Virus Relief Fund, an additional $550,227 to interfund transfer. Reason, reimbursement of 2020, 2021 payroll claims received through grant fund. Since majority of activity is from prior year, it will be necessary to reimburse fund 1159 Health rather than move claims to grant fund.
Make a motion on the Form 144, the three additionals?
Motion, a couple of seconds on the floor, discussion. Where's the auditor at?
Do you want me down?
No, you're all right. Unless you wanna go down there?
Uh, it's up to you.
Is there any discussion on the additionals?
Why don't you just explain what you're doing?
Sure. Okay, with the first one, we don't have an hourly rate established in our general fund for part-time.
Well, maybe you can see the greatest honor in the state of Indiana back there.
Well, there you go. You can hear me though, so, alright. Okay, and so this is really an exciting win-win for the general fund. A few months ago, one of our deputies retired, but we are now in one of our busiest seasons with our end-of-the-year deductions. And so she has offered to come back on a part-time basis to help out our tax act. And so we are only going to pay her hourly, so we're not filling her position as of right now, so we're saving money in the general fund. But at the same time, we're gaining the, gaining that, the experience of our deputy. So we do need a rate to be able to pay her, and this is only temporary for this one position. But it will be going into January as well because of the year-end work carries over into the next year. And then the next one deals And then the next one deals with the forfeiture pass-through fund, this is one that we have gone through the additional appropriation process rather than the budgeting process, um, only because this is a court ordered program, and we don't always know how much is going to come in, the prosecutor and the sheriff are a part of this program, and these amounts are for the expenditures that the auditor's office distributes to the attorneys and to other municipal entities that are engaged in forfeitures. And so this is off per court order, and this is in its own fund, the money has come in, and now the appropriation will allow us to spend it by distributing it to the court-ordered expenses. And the last two are, uh, CARES Act reimbursements, and so these additional appropriations will allow us to reimburse the funds from which the expenses came from.
Thank you. Questions, discussion on the additionals? Form 144 and, uh, three additionals. Get a roll call on all four?
Uh, Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
And Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you. Facilities. Lit Fund, transfer six thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and three cents from household embedding to building and maintenance, reason to cover operational costs of grounds and maintenance for remainder of 2021. Also Form 144, sixty-five thousand nine hundred eighty dollars to sixty-one thousand three hundred ninety, Facility Engineer Two. Forty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars to fifty-three thousand five hundred fifteen, Facility Engineer Four. Reason approved for 2021, need to approve for twenty, I mean, 2022, need to approve for 2021, effective date eleven fifteen, 2021.
Make the motion on the transfer of the Form 144?
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Discussion.
I wanted to ask, didn't we okay this in budget?
You guys were okayed for 2022, but you guys did not do it when I hired it.
Ray, I'd like to just comment that, uh, we talk about grounds and maintenance and the work that your team has done, uh, is very much appreciated, and as we see the lights and the property is well-maintained and cared for, we, that, that work doesn't go unnoticed, so I appreciate that for you and also your team.
Thank you.
And you guys decorate the building too, because you guys do a lot of the good jobs, huh?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Not this floor.
No, I meant, no, no.
Further discussion? Ray, I looked for you the other day.
I know.
Free every time.
I was working.
I'll find you hugging with the other, so. Further discussion? Can we get a roll call on the transfer in the Form 144?
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
And Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second reading. Did I put anything miss? It's not on mine? I always have the old one, I always start marking the old ones. Sorry, tourism, it's like, uh, Tourism Fund, a transfer of five hundred dollars from building longevity to cover longevity shortage in 2021. Thank you. Motion second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Go the same sign. Now, second reading.
Whereas it has been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, therefore be it resolved by the Porter County Council, Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. General Fund, an addition of one hundred twenty thousand and a reduction of one hundred twenty thousand, Sheriff Accident Report Fund, eleven thousand nine hundred, County User Fee Pre-Trial Diversion, five thousand dollars, Sheriff Overweight Vehicle Fund, forty-three thousand one hundred, Public Safety Data Tech Fund, twenty-two thousand, Forfeiture Pass Through Fund, two hundred ninety thousand, COVID ICJI Grant Fund, forty-five thousand eight hundred, uh, COVID ISDH Grant Fund, one hundred fifty-five thousand five sixty-two, COVID IFA Safety Grant Fund, uh, five hundred fifty thousand two twenty-seven. Uh, Local Roads and Bridges Grant Fund, eight hundred and four thousand dollars. And that concludes second reading.
Second reading, entertain a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second, motion second, get a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Uh, Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick. Uh, Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Andy, you want to vote on second reading?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Attorneys' report.
Nothing, there's quite a bit that's still discussed, so there's not, I'm not going to give you the last name.
Thank you. All right, any other matter that may come properly before the council, we have the 2022 Porter County Salary Ordinance, adoption of the 2022 Porter County Salary Ordinance, I think you guys have had a copy of it. Um, sent to you, so I'll entertain a motion to approve it, I believe it reflects reactions at, um, final reading? It's a motion on the floor, second, discussion. No discussion, then can we get a roll call on approving the, um, 2022 Porter County Salary Ordinance?
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Six to zero.
All right. That was fun. So, come on. So that, kind of, um, you know, put some things together, you know, um, I'm gonna read some real quick, my thoughts, um. You know, now that we've essentially finished the 2021 fiscal year, I thought it would be a, I thought it would give a quick summary of the year and then turn our sights to 2022. 2021, I believe, was a very successful year in county government, with our thirty million dollar facility, major facility upgrade projects, most of the twenty million stormwater work in New South Haven completed in 2020, we turned our sights to roads, bridges and redevelopment and more stormwater infrastructure. So, I asked, um, our county engineer to put a summary together, and I'm gonna read that, you know, just for the record, and it's pretty, it's pretty amazing, you guys, I'll try to fly through it, I know I can talk fast sometimes, so I'll try to do it, but I'm gonna read the, what we've done in stormwater, you know, bridges and roads. Porter County Stormwater Program, which was born in 2016, coordinates activities, coordinates activities and administers programs and implements projects across unincorporated Porter County. It serves an area encompassing approximately three hundred forty square miles and contains seventy-one thousand people and is responsible for more than five hundred linear miles of public stormwater infrastructure, more than two thousand linear miles considering roadside ditches, and then more than one hundred fifty stormwater management facilities, detention basins. In 2020 and 2021, the Stormwater Program initiated more than two hundred and thirty infrastructure repair, maintenance, construction or reconstruction projects, with a total contract value of eleven point five million. The projects provide drainage, improve water quality, reduce flood damage and maintain and enhance the county's public stormwater infrastructure. Since the program was born in 2016, the Stormwater Program has initiated almost six hundred projects, totaling more than twenty-three and a half million dollars of improvements. Notably, notably, most of the Stormwater Program's design and engineering, construction, observation works perform in-house, saving local fee payers hundreds of thousands of dollars by performing this work in-house. The completed projects have had a significant impact on the county's stormwater infrastructure, environmental quality, the residential quality, the residence, the residence quality of life. The Stormwater Program efforts in South Haven is a case in point. Since 2018, November 2018, the program has been able to complete six capital improvement projects in Old South Haven, representing an investment of over six and a half million in the Stormwater Infrastructure Serving Subdivision. Today, nearly all the outdated, undersized and deteriorated stormwater infrastructure serving Old South Haven has been reconstructed. The results have not only updated the stormwater infrastructure service serving the area, but has completely transformed it. The county's investment has been matched by residents making improvements to their own homes, including both interior and exterior improvements, landscaping, siding and building remodel. The Stormwater Program's efforts are being recognized outside of the county as well. The program won two awards at this year's 2021 Indiana MS Word Partnership Annual Meeting. Overall, our program was named Outstanding Indiana MS Word Program, and individually, Amanda Vandover was named Outstanding Indiana MS Word Program Coordinator. That's our stormwater, bridges, Porter County Highway Engineering Program, which was reborn in 2017, is responsible for the inspection repair maintenance and upkeep of more than a hundred thirty bridges across Porter County, including bridges located in municipalities as well as those located in unincorporated areas. Since being reborn in 2017, the program has completed ten capital improvement projects to replace or rehabilitate bridges across Porter County. These projects targeted, targeted the county's most efficient bridges, ensuring the safety of the traveling public, the total value of these improvements is over seven and a half million dollars. He lists the bridges completed since 2017, it's a number of them. Um, the program currently has fourteen capital improvement projects in design and engineering phase as well, which will continue to address the county's most deficient bridges. Notably, the Highway Engineering Program continues to make the most of taxpayer funds, constantly seeking outside funding, federal funds, to match local funding to complete necessary infrastructure projects. For example, the program has already secured thirteen and a half million in funding for the fourteen capital improvement projects that are currently in the design and engineering phase. This means over sixty percent, sixty percent of the twenty-two point three million total cost of these projects will be covered by non-local funds. The highway, the Highway Engineering Program has implemented a number of innovative and cost-saving construction techniques such as polymeric bridge overlays, latex modified concrete bridge overlays and hot dip galvanized bridge, um, beams. Beginning in 2021, a dedicated bridge maintenance crew has started working with the Highway Engineering Program to complete bridge maintenance and repair work. This year, 2021, the bridge maintenance crew has completed thirteen repair and maintenance projects ranging from concrete repair, scour protection, underpinning debris removal and tie rod replacement. This maintenance and repair work, which is being completed in-house, will preserve and extend the life of our bridges, again, making the most efficient of our taxpayer roads. Those are bridges, stormwater bridges, roads, Porter County Highway Department is responsible for repair maintenance, upkeep of more than seven hundred and ninety centerline miles of roads across the unincorporated Porter County, and collaborates with Highway Engineering Program through its asset management efforts. The Highway Department has targeted, targeted its road repair, maintenance and reconstruction efforts over the past two years. In 2020 and 2021, approximately ninety miles of roadwork was completed across unincorporated Porter County, including chipped seal, milling inlay, milling overlay, full-length reclamation, rehabilitation, slurry seal and crack seal work. Notably, in 2021, as part of a ninety mile, as, as part of this ninety mile, ninety miles road of work, nearly twenty miles of subdivision, subdivision roads were repaved in twenty-one subdivisions, located across unincorporated Porter County. The total value of this roadwork was more than four and a half million dollars. As, with our efforts on bridges, when it comes to roadwork, we continue to make the most of taxpayer funds, constantly seeking outside funding to match local funding to compete, to complete these necessary infrastructure improvements. For example, in 2020 and 2021, we utilized nearly two million of state funds for roadwork through the state's CMG's Community Crossing Matching Grant Program. Our work, our roadwork has included a number of innovative and cost-saving construction techniques such as full-depth cement stabilization, roadwork construction, slurry seals and paving fabric. Notably, the Highway Engineering Program has performed in-house construction, observation for roads as well as bridge work, saving local taxpayers almost six hundred thousand dollars by performing this in, in-house, this work in-house. I'll leave this, if anybody can make copies, I mean, it's just what our, what we've been doing over the last couple of years and finishing up and continue, look at the work that we have to do on infrastructure, our stormwater, our bridges and our roads, and we gotta continue to do. Um, just kind of, again, just giving a recap, this county, I, I say this, um, this is a county that works and will continue to work, together and forward for the people, not for politics or headlines. It should be no secret to anyone that discussions have been going on regarding a facilities upgrade two point oh or second round. Not included in the first round of our facilities upgrades was the Memorial Opera House, the Center District Highway Garage and the jail. The Memorial Opera House had a feasibility study done at the same time that we got underway with the first round of upgrades, but it didn't make the cut at the time. The study was funded by the federal government Memorial Opera House Foundation, unanimously approved and then accepted by the Board of Commissioners. And I believe last year the Commissioners approved a contract with Schmidt to start looking at beginning foundation exterior work, again, approved unanimously. The Memorial Opera House is a county-owned historical site, is a living, breathing monument of the Civil War. I'll let Scott McDonald elaborate, you know, the light that is breathed into this memorial every day. But let me finish by saying, 2022 is going to be another year of heavy lifting for Porter County. I'd like to say again that Porter County is a county that works. Skillman has been assessing the jail, the bond is nearly paid off and the jail needs work. We as a county, the sheriff, the judges, prosecutor probation, the Commissioners, need to decide the future of that facility, the jail. You know, will a pod be turned into a work release or mental health wing or both, or will it just keep it the way it is with mechanical and structural upgrades? We look at solar out there, maybe with the jail, animal shelter and expo in that same vicinity, vicinity to help, you know, with cost. The Commissioners raise the bridge rate, which would be sufficient for some time to continue the repair and maintenance of our hundred and thirty some bridges. We helped fund an accelerated road improvement plan with the Commissioners, but in order to stay on that path, we have to continue to find the funds or funding. We have, we have undertook a comprehensive wage study that you guys heard tonight to help us able to attract and retain the best in government. We have, we have given out some great raises year after year and want to be able to continue that. Next year, as we wait on the study, employees will receive a sizable stipend or premium pay. We also brought in Baker Tilly this year to help us take a deeper, more comprehensive dive into our finances, looking back and forward. I want to keep this progress in Porter County government moving. There's a different level of cooperation that I have seen in some time that has allowed us to get all this done, and I hope it continues as much, and we have much more to do in Porter County, so that we can continue to move to make Porter County one of the best counties in the state to live and work. With that said, um, I'll open the floor up to the rest of the council to reflect or comment on where we, where we are, and then I'll turn the floor over to Scott McDonald and, um, Skillman, but I don't think Skillman made it, Schmidt, and, you know, the Board of Commissioners, followed up by comments from the general public regarding the AR. So, you know, and you guys, you know, just kind of recap of, you know, what got us here, you guys all got this, um, you know, Mike and Bobby put together, just the amount of work, it's kind of, it's kind of impressive when you sit back in the summary and look at the money that we've spent on our infrastructure over the last couple of years, and we still have to continue to do that with our roads and our bridges and our stormwater, um, and our facilities. So this county has kind of been on a path, um, and as you can see in, in the, the ARP plan, it just built off of things that we've been doing. There's really nothing new, we've been focused, and, you know, I hope we continue to stay focused, you know, on, on improving our, our facilities, improving the infrastructure out there, taking care of our employees and continue to work with others. You know, it's a great company, we've built a reputation right now too, that I want to continue to, to maintain and continue to grow at a high level. So, anybody got anything to, to add or comment on? If not, uh, yeah, please, please, please.
So, yeah, and to the point of the information that President Rebus presented, with all the things that have been accomplished, I, I think, uh, you know, oftentimes we take for granted the work that gets done out there, and oftentimes we don't reflect back on that work because we're moving on to the next, the next project. And I think the emphasis in that information that, uh, that President Rebus, uh, read, you know, talks about what, what I believe to be one of the most important aspects of county government, and that's, uh, the second only behind public safety is, uh, is taking care of infrastructure. And, and for those who have been, you know, paying attention or noticing, hopefully, you have seen and can understand and appreciate the work that has been done over the last several years. And, so I don't want to gloss over the work that the, uh, you know, the Department of Development, Stormwater Management has done. Uh, they, that particular, uh, group in county government has grown over the last several years, and that's, uh, they've hired extremely talented professional people who have put us in a position to move some of these things forward, uh, in a way that hasn't been done in probably twenty years. So I think, you know, whether it's the bridges, which are vital, whether it's the roads, whether it's the ditches that nobody wants to think about or pay much attention to, but I'll tell you for the folks that rely on proper stormwater management, that's absolutely critical. Um, the, you know, the extensive work that the Stormwater Management Department has done, uh, and that is up in some, uh, different areas throughout the county, but probably most notably, uh, up in South Haven, the work that's been, that has been done up there over the last couple of years has been monumental, um, and extremely important, and certainly appreciated by, uh, by the people that. the people that live up in that area. And that area has plenty of struggles as it is, so if there's something that we can do to help repair the, the infrastructure, I think that's, that's what our, our duty is as a, as a government. And, and we've focused on our assets over the last several years with our comprehensive plan. The animal shelter, which the county owns, is in great shape and we're proud of that facility. The Expo Center, which not only helps drive tourism and improve the quality of life for the county, is a beautiful facility for those of you who have not been out there yet. It's a great asset that the county owns. We have felt like it's our duty to maintain and take care of it appropriately, and I think for those of you who've been out there, you can appreciate and be very proud of what the county, what the county owns. Taking care of other buildings, the courthouse, the, you know, the courthouse in downtown Valpo here has been renovated and repaired and restored in many ways, taking care of that facility, making it much more functional. 157 Franklin, which is just behind us, is, you know, home to the E-911 Prosecutor's Office of Probation, and that facility is an impressive facility that the county does terrific, important work in. North County Annex Building up in Portage, we've done all of these things over the last several years, and, and I guess it's good to reflect back on those things and, and again, not take it for granted, and also appreciate the work and effort that the people that made it happen. Make sure that that work goes, doesn't go unnoticed and, and it's, it's recognized. As Jeremy noted, you know, there's a couple of things that were on the list back in 2018 that we didn't have the funding for, the bond couldn't cover it, so they were, you know, on pause. But as we look at this particular facility, which I've committed to memory, 1893, if I've got that right, and this building has been here a long, long time. And, and it's without a doubt the significance of the historical preservation of this particular building is so important, the thousands and thousands of people that benefit from it by, you know, attending the shows is a huge, a huge tourism draw, a huge quality of life draw. Some of the testimony I've heard from people who have been even more significantly impacted by the Opera House in terms of their participation in the shows and whether it be production or backstage, and the impact that it's had on, and that's all ages. I'm especially touched by the children who grow up in the theater, and that's their avenue, and that's what they want to spend their time with, and it's certainly a positive, productive, purposeful use of their time. And so I think it stands to reason that the top of my list at this point is to say the next asset that the county has to protect and to preserve and to make sure that we do it the way that we're proud of, like we've done the other facilities that we've had, that we've done work with. You know, I think that's, that should be the priority and, and the focus. So I'm proud to be in a position where we've offered that up as a consideration for the ARPA money that has become available, and I can't think of a better use of those funds than to make the desperately, desperately needed repairs to protect the preservation and history of this building. So that's all I have to say at this point, and anxious to hear some of the presentations as we move forward.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any comments before I turn it over to Scott? Nope? All right, Scott, why don't you lead us off? Give us a little history of, of this monument we have here, and then we'll bring up-
1893.
1893. Thank you. Then we'll bring up, thank you, Schmidt and Commissioners, and kind of give us where we're at with, you know, this project that's kind of been on the books for a little while. So, Scott.
Thank you all very, very much and for your kind words. I really do appreciate that.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you for being here. I will try my best to be as eloquent as you, Mr. Destin, but I really appreciate that you said. Again, our mission here at Memorial Opera House is to use community and the arts to create a sense of belonging and to build the community. We came up with that five years ago when I took over as Executive Director, and we sat down, we did some strategic planning as a staff because our goals are constantly to be forward-thinking and ever-forward moving with this place. Progress is very, very important to us. And, you know, just like any other recreational facility that you see, the parks, things like that, people want to be here. We have over 20,000 people a year come through our doors, and our youth program, Line Lights, under Bobby's vision, we grew from 14 students in 2016 to over 250 pre-pandemic. So we are trying our best to move forward and to make this place thrive. And we want to provide that haven for people to grow, and that is our goal. We want to make sure that the community feels that they belong here and that they have a place to get out of the everyday hustle and bustle, see things that you can't see anywhere but on stage. If you've got an opportunity to see Mary Poppins, you know, we flew an actress here for the first time in our 130-year history. That was really, really exciting for us, and it was something that, you know, we weren't sure if we were going to be able to do it, but with the support of community, with help from that, we were able to make that happen. Again, I think it is very obvious that there are amenities that are needed here. We have, you know, two and a half stalls in the women's room. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. We have 350 people coming to one performance, so we have over 1,000 people we have coming through our doors. We want to make sure that they have a safe place to go, that it's easy for them to navigate the building. And so five years ago, we sat down and we did that feasibility study. We brought Schmidt Associates on board. We worked with Memorial Opera House Foundation. We interviewed several different architects. We worked with the Commissioners to make sure that we have the right team on board because our staff was doing a lot of this work as far as, oh, we need to turn this room into a lounge. The upstairs lounge was something that we conceived in 2015, and we've kind of hit that ceiling, you know, of being able to do these things on our own. You know, we're great at telling actors what to do on stage, but when it comes to what do we need to do to top point the building, that's not us. So we've really seen a lot of growth over the last five years. You know, year over year, we have increased our subscriber base. When I started as Executive Director in 2016, we had about 10% of our ticket holders were season subscribers. Now, pre-pandemic, and even now, we've stayed stable, 35% of our ticket holders are subscribers. So the numbers are really starting to show, and it's really starting to pay off. Donations have certainly increased. We bring revenue in from other add-ons, including concert tickets that our Memorial Opera House Foundation has taken over our concert series. They're bringing in great bands that have been filling this place up. We had a concert every weekend of October, and this place was packed every single weekend. We also have started selling merchandise. We have classes that are available, so we have a lot of wonderful things that are starting to happen. We have attracted experts in their field. We want to be able to continue to do that. You know, I don't know where I would find somebody else like Stretch, but we have really attracted people that are experts in what they do. Memorial Opera House Foundation has really helped as far as us being able to offset our expenses. Ticket sales are great. They only cover about maybe 35% of our expenses, so being able to bring in grant revenue, being able to bring in donations, things like that, that helps us be able to do the great quality things that we are looking to do here. And just to give you kind of an idea of our ability to stabilize even through the pandemic, even though we had to furlough staff, we were really fortunate that all of our staff came back when we were able to welcome them back after the pandemic time kind of lifted and we were able to open our doors back to the public. But what I'm really, really proud of is this year alone, we've had six months, we've had a happy year, we've brought in over half a million dollars in grants. Between Chuttered Menus Organization grants, between other grants out there, we brought in half a million dollars in grants, which helps offset so many of our costs. Mine, Natalie's, Stretch's salaries are covered by these grants. Also, Memorial Opera House Foundation and us, like I said, with ticket sales, we brought in almost $200,000 in revenue just in six months. Normally, this time of year, we brought in about twice that amount, so we're staying stable, which makes me really, really, really happy. So moving on to the future, we have more great programming that we're looking at doing. We're looking at starting up some theater performed by students with disabilities. It's called Penguin Project. It's peer-to-peer theater, so it helps normalize disabilities for the students that are working as the peer mentors with the students that have disabilities, making sure they have a safe and nurturing environment. But we have to be able to grow in order to make these things happen, right? So that's where I think Schmidt comes on board the most. They've really created something that I think is going to be very, very helpful to us as far as growing into our facility, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to them. And if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer before they get started.
Why don't you stay there?
Sure.
If, Commissioner Blaney's coming up too, right? Yes, perfect. So-
Scott, how many can you guys sit in here?
We currently seat 352.
So Commissioner Blaney, I mean, if you want to add anything, I know this is, when I first got on to the county council, you know, there was a lot to learn, and some of the repairs on the brick that have to be done outside was Laura smashing my head against the brick wall. So I can understand, you know, the, you know, what this brings to Porter County, what this Opera House brings and the programs bring to Porter County. And what, you know, it took me a while to open my mind, but I listened, and I listened, and she didn't stop beating my head against the wall, and, you know, and, and here we are, and I do appreciate that. You know, I'm not ever afraid to admit, you know, I was wrong on the subject and early on, when I didn't know enough to understand the impact of this, you know, of this place. And it's great, and I appreciate that, Laura, and I appreciate what Scott and, you know, his staff does. So with that, Laura, I'll turn it over to you, and you can turn it over to Schmidt.
Absolutely. I just wanted to point out that, you know, flashing back seven years ago, this place was bleeding, and we were in the red. We came to you guys, and so you weren't completely wrong. You funded the beginning of that year just to get us going, because we had nothing to even do our first show. I think we got $50,000 to start the year with instructions to never come back. And I don't think we have. And we've done emergency repairs in that time. At one point, there's a beam that goes up over where you guys are. Yeah.
What, Scott?
Then actually, the brick had so much water damage that you could reach your hand in and pull mush out where it should have been a hard brick. So that was, we were kind of in run to fail. I mean, that was an emergency repair. We had to move a show. It was a mess. Things were a mess. But that's when we started the hard work of turning this place around. We installed a professional staff. We had some great people. We brought in some shows that people really wanted to see. We've always had outstanding talent in our area. So once we got people in here, they wanted to come back. And now we're self-sustaining, the place sells out shows and concerts, it's bursting at the seams. And, you know, we can never forget that it was built, as someone mentioned earlier, as a Civil War monument. And I think the original people who put this whole thought and vision together, it's just amazing, and I wish I could go back and meet them because this place is just incredible. So it's time to give it the attention that it deserves. A lot of things I was going to say, people already said, but fast forward to today, we've been working on these plans for a while now. Recently, we've kind of taken a step back because it came to our attention that the museum was wanting to move to a different location that made more sense for them. And during this planning process, the Opera House has kind of been trying to fit 10 pounds of potatoes into a five-pound bag, and having the extra space that'll come to us from the museum, the front half of the museum, is, it's going to be great. So these guys are kind of relooking at the plans, and, you know, we'd love to have our children's programs, aqua spaces. A lot of this stuff is off-site now, and if we can bring everything in here together, it's just going to really have, you know, multiplier effect on the positive aspects of this place. So I will go ahead and hand things over to our talented architectural team from Schmidt Associates. We've got Brian Burda and Kevin, or Kyle Miller.
Well, thank you. No, council members, it's, it's a privilege being here. We appreciate you inviting us, and we appreciate the Commissioners working with them on the project. Scott's crew has been outstanding. Just, I think we want to talk a little bit about Schmidt Associates, why Schmidt Associates, and that sort of thing. I think those were some of the questions that you might have, one of these, a couple of these books up there, float around, you can take a look at. So just a little bit about, first of all, this, this project is, is a different type of project from what we, from what you see out there. We consider this a, certainly a work of significance for us, a project which we're very proud. This is one that definitely goes on the covers of your brochures and marketing and, and things like that because it is a special building. And so it's, we're very proud to be part of that. Schmidt Associates is, we're a large firm. This is certainly not a project that we can't handle. We've done many, many projects like this. We have, just go through some numbers here. We've got about 115 employees at two offices. We have an office in Indianapolis downtown. That's where about 100 of our employees are. We have an office in Louisville that has about 15. We do K-12 architecture. We do higher ed architecture, engineering. We're a full-service firm. We do community, healthcare work. This would fall into our community studio. And we have architects, we have mechanical, electrical, plumbing, technology engineers, energy engineers, interior designers, civil, civil engineers, landscape architects, construction administrators. We're a full-service firm. We have everybody in-house. And about four years ago, we, we embarked on this project by doing a facility assessment. We met with the Commissioners to talk about kind of what their goals were, but we brought our full team up here. All those people I just mentioned, all the engineers, we brought about eight people up here and did a full assessment of the building to really, you know, get, get inside the bones, get, go back down underneath in some areas that some people have never been in, that we didn't think we could get out of. But some, some very interesting spots in this building, but we looked at the mechanical systems, electrically outside, the brick, we know the brick's an issue. And so from there, it became a project. It kind of went a whole little bit, but then we started developing a project with our partners, Skillman. Skillman, Skillman Corporation has, we've worked with them probably more than any construction manager in the state. We have many projects with them going on right now in Indianapolis and Hammond and all over the state. So they've been a great partner. We know those folks very well. And, and just a little, one more thing about some of the projects that we've done, this type of a building, right? The historic, older type of building, it's very important that we're not just designing new McDonald's or something like that every day. We, we have done probably more historic building work than about any firm in the state. I would, I would put this up against about anybody, where I think we're the third largest firm in the state right now. Some of the projects we've worked on over the years would be the Soldiers Sailors Monument several times, Mishawaka High School's about 100-year-old building, familiar with it? The Athenaeum in Indianapolis downtown, the PR Mallory Building, we just took that building and, and turned it into a charter school, and it's won all kinds of awards. It's an amazing one. We're really proud of it. The Benjamin Harrison Home, Central State Hospital, the Indiana Landmarks, which is the centrum, the former Central United Methodist Church, Ivy Tech, that was the St. Vincent's Hospital in downtown Indianapolis, we turned that building into Ivy Tech's headquarters. We worked at the Indianapolis Symphony Orchestra inside and out of that building. Obviously, that's got some comparison to this building for sure for what it's used for. Both of our offices that we've been in the last two years, Schmidt Associates, are two older buildings downtown that we renovated fully, and then just several K-12 university and government buildings, courthouse renovations all over the state. We've, we've done a lot of those. We've even worked on Collier Lodge. We've been, we're involved in that for the last 20 years to help those folks try to save that, stabilize that building. So a little different than this, but that's what we've been involved in. So, and, and not, not our only performing arts center either. We've done, we've worked at the IU Auditorium, renovated that. Buck, we did a new performing arts center in Bucknell, Bucknell College, Pennsylvania, Goatson College, ISU, just to name a few, and several K-12-type venues. So we're familiar with this venue. With me is Brad Bruteout. I'm going to let him now talk a little bit about what we're doing here. He knows the depths of all of this, the details here a little bit better than me. He's our project manager and a project architect. Let's go.
Thank you, Scott. So like others mentioned earlier, we started with a study. We need to know what, what's wrong with the building, what's, what's going on, what's here, and as, as others have mentioned, the, the exterior. So before we do anything in the interior, it's important to button up the exterior. So with the tuck pointing, looking at new windows, making sure the envelope is, is tight because- because right now, the windows are letting the rain in, they're letting the snow in. So it's deteriorating the inside of the building just because the exterior is not buttoned up correctly. So addressing that first, it's not, it's not your high-dollar value, but it's your, it's your more important aspect of the project. So, and along with that, you've got other site characteristics of stairs out there that need to be repaired. We've got drainage issues in the courtyard area, so looking at addressing all of those as a part of this project. As you come inside the building, Scott made mention of how many people come through this building on a weekend. The restroom facilities are not large enough to, they don't have the capacity to support that. The lobby area isn't large enough to support intermission. Everyone can't go out in there, mingle. It keeps people in the, in the auditorium more. So part of this project is creating a connector between the museum and the Opera House. What will be in that connector would be restrooms and a large lobby and the connection between two buildings. So that connector really creates one overall building at the end of the day. It allows other uses for the current restrooms. So one will be turned in, could be turned into a bar area to serve the lobby. One was talked about turning into the ticket box. So being able to come in, in the connector, purchasing your tickets off-hours, so that you can purchase some Monday through Friday type of thing. So that, those can be used for other, other functions. And then the lot, the current lobby, being able to open that up. I mean, part of it's used as the, the ticket office right now, part of it's used as the bar area. So being able to put those functions within the restrooms, the current restrooms, allows that to open up, and we can completely open that up. So that, that could be a wide-open space in the future. And then also the connector, have a wide-open space and have it to connect and be able to flow between the two spaces.
Connector out there?
The connector is.
Not in this room?
The connector is between the two buildings.
Yeah, where's the door? Right here? Go ahead.
So you can access the connector through these double doors right here. And we were also planning for a connection from the lobby space.
I haven't seen pictures of it.
No. And so within the connector, moving those restrooms over there, being able to create that search space that this facility really needs is part of the overall programming aspect of this. Some of the cosmetic features inside would be replacing all the seating in the auditorium, replacing the carpet, painting. We want to keep the character that's here, but we also want to give it a little bit of a facelift. Looking at new finishes in the lobby. And then some of the things that are big and prove that most people don't see, but help improve your comfort, is the air handling system, the boilers, plumbing. We would, we would replace all the plumbing in here, new lighting. So really getting a facelift on the mechanical side of things as well. So helping in, keep the, keep the building functioning, but keeping, keeping the aesthetic true to its original nature.
And seating is going to be configured differently?
Um, we looked at a little, kind of more of an art feature. The approach was to kind of fit in as many seats as we could with kind of a new chair. The chair style would mimic the style of the building, a little more decorative chair, but would be seated for kind of maximum viewing of the performance.
Does this bring us better into ADA compliance? A lot of people.
Yeah, so, so we would improve seating for ADA in the auditorium. The, the access into the building would be ADA compliant, ADA restrooms. The current restrooms are not up to ADA. So everything that we would be doing here would be addressing ADA.
What about the balcony? Is it about the same as what it's going to be up there?
So the balcony is about the same what it, what it would be up there. There's, behind the balcony, there is, there is a lobby space with an office. So we're going to look at opening that all up now that we have the, the museum. Look at putting offices over there so that we can use more space over here. So there wouldn't be access up there ADA, but it would stay pretty much what it looks like today.
How about that? Certification. Is the seating going to be the same, the amount of people?
We are slightly less.
Slightly less?
Slightly less.
And a lot of that's driven by codes and spaces for seats and things like that. These are, these don't necessarily mean today's codes. When you put new seats in, you tend to lose a little bit, kind of like when you put bleachers in an old gym or something, and you get the same type of.
We're not like skinny men, it seems for the.
We're going to, we're going to put in the most we can per code.
We're losing somewhere in the, like around ten, right?
That's not bad.
Not a large amount.
And the space, the connector space and the museum space, your intention for that use-wise?
Well, that's where we're kind of playing around with things right now. That all just materialized in the last month or two. So, you know, office space right now, Scott and everybody's crammed in together in one office. So to give them a little privacy and room, that'll be great. We've got costumes to store and space for the kids theater, all kinds of things to work in there. So it's still in the works.
Would be a larger, maybe like, like a community room maybe for usage or, so I know there's a nice room, you know, up there, you know, that I think you said, Scott, people even rent out, you know, before a show, during a show.
Yes.
You know, with every, you know, maybe a bigger room that could be rented out or used for the public for.
Sure, I think, I think there's opportunities for being a piece space over there. I think there's all sorts of opportunities, like Commissioner Blaney said, we're just starting to kind of explore that. So we're starting to get kind of our wish lists together, I would say. So we'll work with these guys to really develop that out.
And you're going to be able to do all this with the same staff you have? You're, that, that's the idea?
That's our core staff, yes. You'll probably have to bring out some more personnel for events, but we brought in contractors throughout the year constantly. So I don't imagine that we would have to do too much expansion, but our core staff will remain the same.
You guys at the museum, we're not kicking them out, right?
No, we're not kicking them out. We've, we've actually.
I figured, I just want to say it publicly.
We have an MOU in the works with them, that they, we've met several times, and we just have to improve it.
The orchestra pit, it's going to remain?
Yep.
We're actually hoping to do some pretty cool improvements there.
Like it's going to sink into the floor?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yes.
And one of the surprising things is, you know, really Scott took me down into, you know, the real guts of this.
The little witch room.
It's amazing, and just the wiring, the mechanical, you know, you know, guts of this place needs a lot of work, and I would imagine that's going to be a big portion of this project, even just looking behind some of the curtains, the wiring and stuff is. I mean, if, you know, again, if people just took a walk around, it's, this place needs a little more tender love and care than you can, the eye can even see to make it work the way it should work. So it's, that was amazing to see some of the parts of it, and maybe the freedom of space, there's, like Laura said, the ten pounds of tomatoes or, you know, potatoes, tomatoes, you know, a five-pound bag is definitely down there. So that would be cool, and just, you know, my hope too is this investment by the county in one of its own county buildings, which is a memorial, a Civil War memorial, that it would only just help lift the, you know, you know, the, for everybody else to see what a gem we have here, and that, you know, the county's investing in this gem for other people to see, to attract maybe other music or other, other different programs and people to come here. And, you know, I'm pretty excited to see if we can raise the profile of this place even at a higher level. You know, it's, to me, the amazing part is it's a memorial. It's a, it's not a statue. It's not a plaque. It's a, it's a living, breathing memorial that we still use.
Actually, have to defend several actresses and actors that have came, that performed, right?
You're not talking about Dan Whitten.
It's like what I'm talking about, it gives people an opportunity, and your children an opportunity to grow and to see a main, like the theater.
Some famous people that have been here, I think she's.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, it started in the early nineteen hundreds with Yulie Vandy, who was Ma Bailey in the movie It's Wonderful Life. But even currently, one of VHS's alums, Drew Nelson, who was on the swim team and all that, he performed in the children's theater here before my time, but he's currently in the Broadway production of Chicago. So we have several people that I think this has been a launch path for, whether it be in performing or administration, anything along those lines. It's, it's a very, very exciting place to be and to see those people grow. That's what we want to see happen and continue to see happen.
Now, Scott, listen, like back here, is there going to be more improvements too to where you can maybe enhance some of these productions, where you can do some cooler stuff as part of the renovations as well?
Yes, absolutely. I think, again, it's been spoken by Jeremy, and like I said, you know, we kind of have wires that run everywhere to make power work for some of those enhancements that we have now. We'd like to see that a little bit more contained, and I think Schmidt really has some great plans for that, so that we are doing things as safely as possible as well, because that's a huge, huge thing. We want to make sure that we, as we have volunteers come in, we keep them as safe as possible and that we protect them and protect the asset, you know? And we aren't running cords all over the place that they probably shouldn't be.
And we have, over the past few years, well, the foundation has helped already do some of that stuff. We have some incredible screens that are behind you that show live moving backgrounds during shows, or, you know, the tornado in The Wizard of Oz, that was pretty cool, stuff like that.
The entirety of It's Wonderful Life, that's projected. The projected abuse for that show, that was purchased by Memorial Opera House Foundation. So things like that, yeah, absolutely.
They've been fantastic.
So in terms of timeline, you know, I know the cost from, you know, when this usability study came out, you know, five years ago, twenty eighteen to now, and it sounds like you're still working on some of the things in the project now that, you know, you believe it's going forward. And I'm sure you probably don't have the cost completely nailed down, but a little bit of the cost and then timeline?
Yes. So I can talk a little bit about that. So because we're relooking at some things, we're taking a couple steps back, which is, is fine. It's always easier to change it on paper than it is once you start construction. So we're relooking at a few things. We're looking to finish up drawings in May, so middle, towards the end of May, and then go out to bid in June, and then start construction sometime in July, August timeframe. And construction's probably going to take about twelve months to complete. So that's, that's kind of the construction timeline.
Shut down for twelve months? Or are you guys able to still do shows while it's getting played?
We need to work through the phasing portion of it. There might be some of the connector and some of the museum that could be renovated if we needed to hold off to start in this building. Cost-wise, we're still looking between a five and a six million dollar project. It's hard to nail costs down right now. I mean, we're seeing estimates come in every which way. So looking at five to six million here, we still need to, we're still looking for cost-saving measures as we're revisiting the design, see if there's some things we can adjust now that we've got a little more space over in the museum, and maybe there's some things we can simplify. Because there is a lot of complexity in this building. There's a lot of complexity in putting a building between the two buildings. So there's, the first floor of this building is not the same floors next door. So trying to get those things to match up and trying to make sure we're not covering up windows, and we're, we're thinking about all the things that are out there while still keeping them visible within the connector. That's the neat thing about the connector, is that when you walk into the connector, you're still going to see the two exteriors of the building. So we're not covering up anything there. We're, we're really highlighting it just from the inside. So long answer to your question about schedule and budget.
Yeah, no, I'm still working on that. Gives me a little better understanding of the time, timeframe, and it's, Scott, I mean, you're through COVID, shut down, now your wish of a, you know, an upgrade and slight expansion, another shutdown. So it's, it's going to be well worth it, so for sure.
So is there any other questions from the council for Schmidt Associates?
No, just a question about your workers. Any plans on, like, if you're going to be shut down, what's going to happen to them?
I think there's going to be plenty for them to be doing between inventory and all that. We have ten thousand costume pieces that we need to inventory and store. We have, you know, plenty of planning. We're looking at continuing to do special events that we do stay in the public eye. And I want to say too, that Memorial Opera House Foundation took really great care of my employees while we were furloughed as well, and so we were able to work with them. So I think that there are some plans that could be worked out. We just haven't developed that yet because we don't know what the scope is going to look like.
So.
We'll just consider, you know.
Sure. Any, any questions? The council or? Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Pretty exciting, this project, looking forward, getting it off the shelf a little bit, looking forward. So, thank you. So, all right, now to wrap things up tonight, moving to the discussion, the ARP plan. You know, we received our funds in June? June? ARP funds sometime in June, I believe it was. You know, I believe all the other units shortly after us. Porter County unit, Porter County government units in total have received or will receive over eighty million dollars between the schools, the cities and towns, and the county. You know, I went back and looked at it too, and, you know, just seeing where all the money went, you know, the eighty-plus million dollars. For example, the school systems, Boone, eight hundred thousand. Dunland, over four million. East Porter, million and a half. Portage, twelve million. Porter, eight hundred thousand. Union, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Valparaiso, four point two. School systems in this county in terms of ARP funds received twenty-four and a half million. Municipalities, Beverly Shores, hundred and thirty-five thousand. Burns Harbor, four hundred and twelve. Chesterton, three point one million. Dune Acres, forty-one thousand. Hebron, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Touts, four hundred and forty-two thousand. Agden Dunes, two hundred and forty-five thousand. Pines, forty-five thousand. Portage, eight point three million. Porter, one million. Valpo, seven point six million. The municipalities, twenty-two million, twenty-two and a half million, basically. You know, Porter County, we are receiving the thirty-three million. So between the school systems and municipalities in the county, over eighty million dollars of ARP funds that, you know, federal tax dollars that are coming this way. So, you know, when the commissioners, you know, put their plan together, you know, the timing of it was because we are giving premium pay to, you know, the public safety in the county, four thousand dollars. So we needed that to kind of, you know, coincide with our budget session. So when they put this together, and, you know, I'll turn it over to Mike, you know, if he'll do it, because Mike's a much better speaker than I am, to read through our project list again. And if you'll hear the project list, and that's why earlier I just kind of reviewed what we're doing, this list just, the commissioner's initial, you know, interim list, which is only half of the money, is only following the path and the plan that we've laid out over years in this county, and, you know, the success. With this federal dollars coming down, it just made sense, some of these things to, to get accelerated. So, you know, I commend the commissioners and what they laid out in the first half and. and, you know, Mike, if you don't mind, you know, this is, this is the first half of the plan and then we'll, we'll open it up to the public, you know, to speak on, you know, their thoughts on the first half of the plan and maybe, you know, ideas for the second half, are we missing something? So.
Okay, yeah, so, to President Rivas's point, we have received half, half of the disbursement and we anticipate getting the other half next year. So, the first half, our first spend basically is, that was developed by the commissioners in conjunction with the council and approved by the commissioners and then unanimously approved by the county council. Includes, includes the following, and I'll go through this quickly because this information is not, is not new and is, is out there for public, public consumption. But, starting at the top, relative to the COVID, COVID response and responding specifically to COVID, COVID-19, we've allocated $25,000 for a neuro health, for a mental health study. I think all can appreciate the difficulty that we've had with mental health throughout the community for a long period of time and with the, with the pandemic and so forth, that's just magnified that problem even more. So, $25,000 dedicated to the study. Also, $785,000 will be allocated toward the courthouse or the jury assembly and construction facilities, maybe that, upgrade that, that room to make, to make it more, more accessible and comfortable for the jury, jurors, technology for the jail, sheriffs, courts, and then also our, our architect fees for space planning to make sure that we do everything we can to mitigate or prevent, prevent COVID. So, you know, other, other categories or other entities that are included in the plan include township government, that is a entity that did not receive, Jared Abel mentioned, the schools and the municipalities and towns. Township government did not receive any of the money from the federal government or state up until this point at least. And so, part of our plan is to allocate $500,000 to township government divided by population so that they all would get a piece of that. And of course, township government by its nature is designed to take care of poor relief, take care of assistance for folks who need help with rent and utility, utility bills and people who are also in need of food. And so, that's the work of the township government generally, and so we thought it was important to contribute to their, to their funding to make sure that they had enough as the need increases as a result, as a result of the pandemic. Porter County redevelopment, economic infrastructure and construction work, try to help what would be viewed as one of our more impoverished areas up in, up in the South Haven area. We've allocated $1 million to the redevelopment commission, specifically targeting the South Haven area up on Route 6 and near that area. Then, all areas have been impacted by COVID and so forth, and you can certainly understand and appreciate that in the areas that are already struggling through COVID into the mix, it makes matters that much worse. And so, we think there's a terrific potential for economic development up in the, up in the South Haven, South Haven area, and we're committing $1 million to the redevelopment commission specifically for that area as a result of. Then, you know, we talked also about, and the ARPA funding allows for focusing on impacted industries, including tourism and outdoor activities and all those things that were especially hard, and of course, we're sitting in one of those facilities today that was dramatically impacted in a negative way based on COVID and the limitations that are out there. So, we're, we're contributing and allocating $2.5 million specifically for the Marquette Trail, which for those of you who aren't familiar with that, it's a trail that's gonna go take people ultimately to Chicago, a trail dedicated to Chicago that will take you all the way to New Buffalo, Michigan. It's also an outdoor space, a 10-foot long path for the bicycle and pedestrian traffic to enjoy the outdoors, enjoy the lakeshore and all the things that, that that area has to offer. We have a missing link, we're missing a segment of that, that this money will help, will help correct. And then, we've talked about, of course, we're here in this wonderful facility, talking about allocating to $5,500,000 for upgrades, restrooms, flexible open space for patrons, social spacing and all those things that could be improved upon here to restore this, this magnificent facility. And then also have $250,000 of that initial first half for building upgrades at the Indiana Dune 12th and those, some movements, some other parking lot needs and so forth they have had, which has also been specifically impacted by the, by the COVID pandemic. Premium pay, Jeremy, Jeremy mentioned, a billion and two of our dollars from that first half will go to premium pay and as we've talked about, allocated for stipends for this, this coming year in lieu of percentage increases frankly. Stormwater management, we've talked about that a bit tonight and the importance of that, and again, unless you understand or fully have been, have been impacted by stormwater and the effect it can have, you can hopefully appreciate that the $4 million allocated to critical stormwater infrastructure projects. Stimson, Stimson Drain, which is a ditch that nobody wants to talk about a whole lot, but it's a big problem that needs to be corrected, and we're gonna allocate money toward that plus other drainage, significant drainage infrastructure problems that we have throughout the county, similar to the drainage infrastructure problem we had up in the South Haven area, which many of you are, are familiar with, where the infrastructure was deplorable underneath the ground until you fix the base of the roadway through the stormwater. You can't, you can't fix the roads, you can't fix the drains if you don't go underneath and take a comprehensive approach to it. We have several areas throughout the county that are in need of that sort of attention. So, those are the areas that have been targeted at this point. I mean, we're still in the, you know, from a conceptual standpoint, we're still obviously working out many of the details, but those are the dollars that we've allocated as part of that initial tranche of 16, 16 million dollars.
Thanks, Mike. And again, we kind of, you know, the review of the year and the last couple of years, you know, done that, you know, to show the work that's been going on in this county. And it's like, the first portion of this plan, it follows the overall direction, I'll say it again, of the county, you know, from supporting law enforcement to efforts under jail and courts to stormwater and redevelopment efforts, to the visitor center, Memorial Opera House, the county metro, into township governments and mental health. These are all efforts that the county has been engaged in at some level or another recently. Nothing in this plan is dubious at all. This is where we've been going. So, with that said, you know, I'll now open up the floor for public comment, you know, about basically the overall direction of the county that's in this first part of the plan and, you know, any ideas or comments or concerns. And like I said, I also, we're not the only one that received, you know, these dollars, but, you know, we're, we're being open and showing you where we've, where we're spending, you know, the money. And there's still another 16 and a half million dollars if, if we're missing something, you know, you know, I'm excited to hear. So, with that said, and I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name, it's Mike's fault, he kind of told me how to say everybody's name. Yeah. Um, yeah, and, and just briefly, you know, I wrote down some, you know, rules that we generally follow, you know, rules for public input. Limit the comments to a couple minutes, you know, if you're in the middle of something, I'm not gonna cut you off, but, you know, a couple, two, three minutes or so, you know, please keep everything civil and on topic, you know, and this is not a debate. We're, you know, we're here to take, you know, public input, we're not gonna debate you back, you know, we're gonna listen to, you know, the input. So, and if you could, when you come up, you know, to the, to the lecture and, you know, just state your name and the city or town or, or, you know, if you're in an incorporated area of the county, let us know and correct me if I pronounce your name wrong. So, um, yeah, when I pronounce your name wrong. So, uh, so, Bill Laster?
Hi, I'm Bill Laster, I'm from Chesterton. And as I have heard you guys speak tonight, and I have to apologize, I haven't heard much about the Opera House here except it was being renovated. I've never visited it, I've never used its facilities, and have something like 90% of the county. We have 168,000 residents and you have approximately 12,000 people that use this facility. 7,000 of them are subscribers, so they come every time. So, you don't have 20,000 of them. I think what you're doing is great. I think it's a wonderful project. I just think that you're, as a group, not using the correct funding for this project. All right. ARPA funds are not to be used unless funded through the county, well, hang on a second. General economic development and infrastructure projects are not ineligible expenses. All right. And I know there's workarounds for all this, but with the American Infrastructure Plan money on the way here, ain't here yet, but it's been signed, it's covered. I just think that you would be better off spending the ARPA funds for township government, poor relief, rents, medical expenses, mortgage help, you know, for, for people that are hurting from COVID, which is what these funds are intended for. You know, I've taken a lot of notes, I know you guys have already made up your minds about what you're doing. I think if the public comes up and tells you what they think, I think a lot of them will think the same way I do. I think these funds are not intended to be, you know, used in the, in the fashion that you're talking about. There's a lot of different things that they have in there, and I've read through the whole, the whole ARPA deal to see what, what stuff's supposed to be done, and you're doing a good job with a lot of it, but I just think that this and giving a million dollars to a Tiff district are not in that sense proper uses of money. And with that, as I said, thank you.
And to be clear, you know, again, just reiterate, the commissioners put this plan together, following the path of, of county government, what we have laid out. I, I can tell you there, I have not heard anybody saying what they want to do with the next 16 and a half million, and so, I, I do think we're, we are sincerely here to, to listen to people's comments and input, so, thank you, Bill. Reagan Smedley?
Hello, I'm Reagan Smedley, I live in Valpo and I'm 14 years old. In 2014, the Memorial Opera House became my home away from home. Since then, I spent countless hours here at rehearsals or volunteering in any way I can. I've been in 10 productions here so far, including 15-plus more all around northern Indiana. But even though I've worked with many different companies and theaters, the Memorial Opera House is by far the most elegant and unique. But I've noticed after a year and a half, unable to do live theater, more and more theaters are fading away. The Memorial Opera House has definitely been struggling the past few years with peeling walls, not enough restrooms and limited space for rehearsals and storage. Without the needed expansion and restoration, the Memorial Opera House will not be able to provide the community with a welcoming space for performances and more for years to come. I know you may hear people who, some people who are against this project, and I certainly tried to consider why they might feel that way, but quite frankly, it's impossible to think of this building in any other way than positively. I'm 14 years old and I can literally not remember a time in this building and the people in it not an important part of my life. And when I think of my hometown, I think of the Memorial Opera House. I might have only 14 years behind me, but I can only hope for 100 more to come. I want those 100 years to come to involve experiences in this new space that are positive for performers, patrons and guests. I'd like to thank those who support giving us the needed funds for this to happen. Yeah, thank you.
You mean Reagan?
Stephen Ingram?
Steve Ingram, Valparaiso, Indiana. Hopefully I don't jump all over the place on this because there's so many different directions to go on this. I'll just say a quick word about the museum. We were looking about a year, 18 months ago to do a little of that, and we went over to the museum and walked through it. It's a nightmare. It's never had central heating, central air, windows are busted out of the jail, been like that forever. You know, when you say, oh, the history museums leave in Whittington Lake, are they? Or do they not protect their collections that are, you know, belong to this community? So, that's all I want to say on the museum. I am for renovating, restoring that building, absolutely. And I'm absolutely in agreement with what everybody says, these buildings should be preserved, they should be restored, the tuck point should take place and all this sort of thing. Now, I'm disappointed, you know, we had a presentation by a couple of architects that are well respected, but yet we didn't have any presentation of what's been going on, what's this gonna look like? It's been three years, we got no idea of what this looks like. And, you know, here we are saying, okay, give us $5.5 million, trust us, and we're gonna make this look great. And I think another thing you have to look at, when you look at the facades of these buildings, when you go across the street, look at the facades, it's not just the front, it's not just the front of the museum, this amazing side with stained glass, the amazing side of the Victorian Opera House, those are gonna be gone for public view unless you come inside and take a look at them, you can't appreciate them, you can't stand back and look at them, and we're gonna lose that. And, and the cost is absolutely amazing. You know, I don't know what the square footage of this is gonna be, we have approved 800 square feet addition. My cost? 1,500? At 1,500 square foot addition, it cost us somewhere around $1,800 a square foot, guys, $1,800. New medical is being built at $300 a square foot, and we're gonna go six times that number to put, you know, 1,600 square foot on here. We're losing seats, you know, we're supposed to be bringing more people in, but we're gonna lose 10 more seats out of here. You know, during the 50s, 60s and 70s, 70s, downtowns were struggling, and one of their ways to solve the struggling problem, they thought, was to put all these facades. We've all seen, you know, the steel facades, they cover up the windows, they put the aluminum up, and we know what happened then. The 90s came along and everybody said, what the heck did we do? And now the facades are coming. We've done it in Valpo, we still have a few that need a bit of work, but they've done it. If you haven't been to Leport lately, drive over to Leport to see what that looks like, all the facades are coming down. And I worry, and it's gonna happen, 20, 30 years from now, the folks are gonna say, what the heck did they do? And that will come off, and the buildings will be put back. And the buildings will be put back to where they should be put back. And I wonder, has any other studies been done where to put this annex? We have a part of the building back here that connects with the museum, and it's just missing by a foot or so. And we thought about moving the entry to the rear of the building, like City Hall did. They did an amazing job as an addition, leaving all three sides of the front of that building intact. And we thought of that. And we thought about this alley over here, moving the entry, the connector over here on this alley. That alley doesn't look like it has utilities in it at all. We have an alley here. You know, and we thought of that, or we just said, okay, let's get the grassy area out here and fill it up? And, you know, and it absolutely amazes me that, you know, in this, twenty twenty-one, you know, with what we're trying to undo from years past, we're gonna double down and take out two national monuments. One of them will be this one, Golsa, the Civil War Memorial to the soldiers fought and died in slavery in this country. We're gonna put an annex on it. Drive, you know, drive through any of these historic towns anywhere in this country, and why are you compelled to go there? Is because the charm, you don't have new buildings put in. You know, we just spent two weeks out east driving through, you know, the communities out there. You just don't have it. You just don't have a modern mashup, you know, connecting two buildings together. To me, it's just, it's unfathomable, to be honest with you. Sorry, I got notes all over the place. Let's keep the notes as we're going along. So I guess, you know, I'd love to see a slideshow. What are we gonna look at? Is it gonna be historically appropriate? Is it gonna try and look like this building? Is it gonna try and look like every, and I'm not being disrespectful if I sound that way or not. Is this new addition gonna look like every Taco Bell, every Starbucks that's been built in the last ten years? You know, yes, preserve this building, respect this building. Do it. Do it with a soft hand. You know, do it with respecting the past, respecting what's been done here. Take a look, I don't know, you know, was part of the study just to, all right, let's connect these buildings up here. Did you look at the back? Did you look at the side? As doing something appropriate, something that really works. So, that's all I have on this, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, sir, in eighteen, the feasibility study had drawings in it, so, and I would imagine as commissioners move forward, you know, all their meetings are public, and I would imagine things will, you know, as they finish, things will definitely become, you know, open in those meetings, so, but, great feedback, really.
Well, the thing is, all right, we have to finish drawings, we're done.
This was in eighteen, I'm saying that was, you know...
You know what I mean, though? We're, we're gonna have finished drawings, okay, we're done, we don't want any more public comment, thanks for coming, and that sort of thing. Put the drawings we have up now, let's talk about it. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Nanette Jones? Nancy, I think, I believe? Satterly?
Nice to breathe. I'm Nancy Satterly, I live in Flora Lake, in unincorporated Porter County, and I, just a quick question of, is there gonna be more opportunity for public input, or is this it? It sounds as if, you know, three people made the decisions on how this will be spent. I don't need, I don't know that we need to have people congregate, it seems like we could do a survey online, so interested people could comment and choose some, you know, have some input into this whole thing. So is there going to be further, maybe for the next round of money, or even maybe commenting on this one? Public input?
I think it's more of a question for the commissioners, because that comes before the commissioners. We are approving the money here today. As far as the next one, I'm sorry, I would assume there would be an input, right?
No, I mean, again...
Why do the commissioners didn't even have input on public?
All, all of our, all of our meetings are public, and this is, this is, and the commissioners are public, this is the first, you know, it was discussed and passed in the commissioners' public meeting, it was discussed, and when we, when we gave a vote of support at, at the council level, you know, we will then, you know, hold a public meeting to allocate dollars, whether it's all, you know, sixteen and a half million at once, or portions of it. So, all of our meetings are public, and this is, and I'm yet to see another unit of the government do this, but right now we're open, and we're taking comments right now. So we're asking for it right now. You're asking for the next opening, but you have it right here, ma'am, so, you know, we definitely want it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Christian Anderson?
First of all, I'd like to thank our county council for giving us the opportunity to be here, and also to chill off the Memorial Opera House. I'm not sure if that many of you remember or even were alive then. Back in the nineteen eighties, there were a number of prominent people in Valparaiso that thought the old jail should be torn down, and perhaps this and replaced with modern buildings, so it'd be appropriate for our town. Thank God, there were prudent people who saw the need for the past and to preserve it, and as a result, we're having a meeting here tonight, and I think that's wonderful. The other reason why I'm up here is I would like to just think about the fact, we were talking about, there's some money coming. And I know that there's a lot of people that have a lot of uses that they think are most paramount and need to be done yesterday. One of my concerns is, I live over in the Lakes area, north of Valpo, and we are having some major problems, which involve drainage, stormwater, a number of issues. We have one lagoon that flows into Flint Lake, which about ten or fifteen years ago was three to five feet deep. Now it's six to ten inches deep because of sedimentation coming in there, and that's also entering into Flint Lake. One thing that I'm hoping is that the council is aware of some of the concerns up there, and that for future generations, our Lakes area does not become smelly bogs, but remain pristine and beautiful. Thank you.
Raymond?
Come on, try it.
I apologize, sir.
Backwards is crap, right? Forwardwards is parkart.
Ray Parkart, I'm from Portage, and talk a little bit of little things, but thanks to the bike trail expansion, that is a wonderful thing, I'm looking forward to it. I work in Chicago, and I've actually thought about, once you get it done, being able to go from Portage to Chicago on a bike. We're, so I work in a neighborhood in Chicago, and a lot of people were big on bikes, and they're trying to get us to stop driving. It's only about an hour bike ride if the trail were in place, so I'm still looking forward to that expansion, so, that's pretty cool. So, I wrote it down, I have five and a half minutes. Present reverse, I'm not as fast as you, but I'm gonna try. So I've been involved in theater here since about nineteen eighty-nine. I'll skip all the history, because you can read that on the website, you can read the moral process on some wonderful things. But since those, since those early exciting times, many performers have had their opportunity on the stage. Doctors, lawyers, politicians, people across from all professionals, students, moms, dads. Those who are just here to support a friend have the opportunity to be involved, whether they want to or not, either onstage or off, offstage. They get to bring smiles, laughter, tears, joys, and those, to those sitting in the office. I can't begin to count, as Scott pointed out, those who have started their careers here but have moved on to professionals, professions in performing arts. As important as those who have leveraged that skill are those, the rest of us in our everyday jobs. Learning to have a voice, stand up, become a stronger person, those people are countless over the audience for those who are involved and come to see those shows. But let me not neglect the mention of the shy, those who never thought they could stand up in front of a crowd. The shy kids who attend the line light programs, those early performers who learn to excel, break out of their shells, and bring smiles to everyone in the audience. In a J.P. Green and team twenty-eighteen, two-year study, the plays, long title, the plays The Thing, experimentally examining the social cognitive effects of social field trips to see live theater performances. Where high school students randomly assigned to either see a live movie, to see a movie or live theater production observed, there is a significant educational benefit for seeing live theater, including higher levels of tolerance, social perspective, taking a stronger command of the plot and vocabulary of those plays. Students randomly assigned to watch a movie did not experience those benefits. So, so what's the importance of theater today? In Kate Brown's May '09, twenty sixteen article, The Importance of Theater Today, she writes, "As an audience member, theater serves its purpose as an emotional experience without permanency of emotional pain. Because there is no barrier between the audience and the play space as in film, any kind of intensity projected by the actors affects the audience. Theater is connecting, healing, imaginative, and intelligent." So why do we do it? Well, I think it's all because we have a big ego. But let me, let's look at ego from a different perspective of self-esteem, which is one of Oscar's definitions. It takes a lot of self-esteem to stand upon this stage all alone, sing a song, read a scene, scene from a play you've never seen, with a person you may not know, but who will probably become, become a friend. Audition to a room of strange faces, hoping to get that one special part. And as the length of chorus says, is? Come on. I get it! But sometimes we get the part, sometimes we want the third, fourth person on the right, but it takes an ensemble to put on the show. No matter the part of the stage, no matter the part onstage or working behind the scenes, it's the involvement that matters. We meet new faces, people, cultures, traditions. We make lifelong friends. Some of you even find their spouses. There she is. So, I met my bride during high school theater, and after thirty-two years, we occasionally still do theater together, as recently seen in my book, if you haven't chances yet. Many of my closest friends are those I've done theater with going back forty-plus years. I wrote, I feel old, and I crossed it out, but I'm gonna say I feel old. So is there value in expanding this amazing room to provide many more shows, opportunities, a public venue for events, and continue the amazing sense of community to a community served by this theater? I hope everyone here in this room agrees with the resounding yes. Is the building gonna be everything, a be-all, end-all to everybody? If anybody can say soldier field, we know it's not. But it's the opportunity of what's going on inside, not only what's going outside, that draws people in. So closing, I would share the words Charles Ishwood, a critic from the New York Times, "A Little Sweet Escapism" sounds pretty appealing. Thank you for your time.
My name is Mark Williams, I live in South Haven, I'm very appreciative of the stormwater improvements in that community, it's been much easier to drive through it. Mostly I'm here in support of this building, having only come here like five years ago out of a need to, I was looking for a way to express myself, and I found it in here. I try to encourage everyone I know that maybe doesn't have a place to go, that this is, this is the, a place where they can go to maybe discover who they are. And I know that other people have, and I think of what more could be done with the, you know, with the right people in charge, and, and these are the right people in charge. And I'm very appreciative to them, and I'm not, I've run out of things to say, I'm, I'm all limited words, so, thanks for listening.
Katie Potten?
Hello, I'm Katie Westlin Potten, I live in Portage, and I am here also in support of this project for renovating the Opera House and expanding the annex. I have done theater pretty much my whole life, at least through the end of high school, and then as I went to college and adulthood beyond, I kind of stepped away from it, like it gets busy enough. But in twenty eighteen, I came here and I auditioned for It's a Wonderful Life, and ended up making it, and since then, the last few years, I've been extremely fortunate to learn to call this place home. I've met amazing, hardworking, passionate people, both the staff and the volunteers. Actually, two of the people I've met in that time were bridesmaids of my wedding this year, so, echoing what everyone has seemed to said about, you know, finding really important people in your life. We do great with the resources we have here, and I can only imagine what we could accomplish if we had more. I don't want to preach to the choir too long, it looks like a lot of people have been expressing support for this, which I appreciate. Just kind of a few things to drive home the, the need. I, from a volunteer perspective, we're a great time, we make the best of what we have, and the caliber of shows that are put on with what we have are really impressive, but you definitely feel the strain when you're in a show. I'm in Holiday Inn right now, and just one of many examples, we were talking about the pit before, we have who's in the pit here, and then everyone else in the pit is shoved into whatever corner they can, we can make work. So right now they're in what was kind of the set shot before, and we have to pull down that big metal door, and if there's a snapper with costuming during the show, we can't get up to the costume shop because that door's there. You know, at the end of the night, when we're trying to sweep up the dressing rooms, we're constantly sweeping up bits of the wall that have crumbled off during the show. So, there's, there's definitely a need to make sure we can preserve this place and make it as functional as possible. And also, as a patron, I've been in four shows here, but I've attended a lot more, what has been expressed a lot about, you know, the congestion, and as much as this is a gathering place for the community now, there's been concern expressed about how many people in the community currently utilize this space, and I think, while we might be losing a few seats, I think there's been talk, someone asked about a community room, moving the line lights in-house, I think so many more people in the community could be serviced by this building if we have the space and the resources and the means to do so, which I think this annex and a number of other projects within this larger project could accomplish. So, in summary, you know, this place is a bastion of the community of both arts and history. We bring value to the community through musicals, concerts, cap raves, the children's program, line lights, and so much more, but I really think that this investment, a significant investment, pardon me, would provide exponentially more value to the community from our small kids all the way up to seniors. Thank you.
Walt?
Writing it?
I'd like to thank the entire council, and I guess I'll try. I also, and by the way, I live in a building that was built in the eighteen seventies, and it ain't easy. I recognize how challenging it is to work with a building as old as this one, and I really want to thank the foundation and people like Scott McDonald and Commissioner Laura Blaney for all the work they've done to save the building, and I think it's a, it's just a magnificent building, and I'm very much in favor of historic preservation. You may know me as an environmentalist, and to me, the greenest buildings are the oldest buildings, and I'm delighted the building has been saved. Since nineteen sixty-six, I've been trying to preserve and protect the environment of Porter County, our clean air, our clean water, our natural resources, and, I don't know, just a recent study that just came out said eighty-six percent of the teenagers in the United States are either highly concerned or worried about the disruption of our environment. And we need to listen to those kids, we need to recognize that even though there's fantastic things being done, like, and by the way, not only kudos to the Opera House people, but to Mr. Navatney, that guy's brilliant, he's hardworking, he's dedicated, I'm... I'm very, very impressed with his work on stormwater, so I don't mean by any means to diminish that. On the other hand, when you look at the purpose of the American, of the entire Rescue Act, when you read, when you Google it, number one, number one thing, the purpose of the money that's going to the local governments is to support public health. That's the first thing you brought up. And then you go a little bit deeper as far as what the, where the resources are supposed to go. Number one is investments in infrastructure for water and sewers. It's clear as a bell as you read through it. And we have a lot of problems with infrastructure, even though Mr. Navatney is addressing beautifully some of our stormwater problems. But as gentleman Christian Anderson pointed out, we have some pockets of extremely low-income folks with problems with sewers. In fact, many homes north of Alpo were built in the 1920s, '30s, and '40s. They were built as summer cottages with no septic systems. Some of them didn't even have cesspools. Some of them to this day only have poorly functioning cesspools. So the effluent, and I know this isn't a pleasant thing to bring up at this beautiful event, but we have a serious problem with sewage. It's percolating through the yards up there, it's going into our lakes, ultimately it flows down and gets us to Flint Lake, and then flows down through Crooked Creek. The people that own those homes would love, I heard South Haven brought up as economically disadvantaged, they could never dream to be in a house like one in South Haven. Some of them are living in tiny properties with no yard for septic system. What tiny yard is there is the wrong type of soil. It's clay. It can't absorb the sewage, so the sewage runs down in the rains, runs into the lakes. And I'm not just concerned about the lower-income folks. There are some McMansions and some mini castles there. If those people want to go fishing, swimming, or boating, they too are facing the same contaminated water, full of pathogens, not just E. coli, but all kinds of diseases can be spread. Our health department is concerned about this, but I think as you talk to different people, they'll say, well, we're not in the business of evicting poor people or little old ladies from their homes. And there are people, by the way, if you want to learn more about what's going on, you could talk to Dr. Stamp, who's in charge of our health department, or Lady Sepeda, Sepeda, that actually does the day-to-day work of controlling the department. Kathy Luther from NIPSCO has, or NERPC, she has a huge amount of background in public health and knows about these faulty septic systems. And then even at the state, Dave Ortell at the state health department, he could confirm, or he could answer your questions about some of these. My point being, whether it's this pot of money or some future one, I think that we need to look at some of these clusters, some of these neighborhoods, very low-income homes with faulty septic systems and inability, they have no financial ability to run sewers or extend sewers into their neighborhoods, and we need to find a way to protect those homes and at the same time protect all of us. It's not just that I'm concerned about the lower-income people, it's about everybody's water, but even more importantly, the people that recognize that treasure, which is our Valprese chain of lakes, and the younger folks that see it being degraded and seeing our air and our water quality and our natural resources and our natural spaces taken away little by little, but it all adds up, and I thank you for your time.
Suzie Taluski, I think I got it right in. Talus.
I just came out because I saw the proposed $5.5 million for this Opera House. I think it's way too much. I agree with this gentleman right here who spoke earlier. So it's one thing to preserve and protect. I do agree that it does need, you know, structural preservation, obviously, or it needs some renovation, obviously, or new seating. Everybody who's been sitting here now for several hours probably can tell you their back hurts. But I think it's actually fairly outrageous to add an addition, a connector between this building and the other building. The other gentleman did make a good point, that you're sort of going to be altering the historical nature of the building by making this kind of alteration. Isn't this on the National Registry of Historical Landmarks? So I think that the only thing you guys should be looking for or looking at is just preserving this building and making sure that it's structurally sound. But any kind of addition is really just a flat-out waste of the federal taxpayer dollars that are coming into this county. One thing about this county is we have some really great urgent needs. Counselor Sims here has tried to highlight the fact that there is an uptick in suicides in this county, which I really appreciate that. And I think the rest of the council, each and every member, joint council member Sims, in speaking with all the leaders in our county to figure out what is going on, why that is happening, and to do an analysis, in fact, of the woefully inadequate psychiatric services that we have in this county. I don't know if you're familiar with how bad they are. You can ask any family who has a family member in crisis how bad they are. Maybe we can hold a meeting for that so you guys can hear what's going on and how many people are in grave crisis. When the county hospital was sold years ago, they failed to ensure that there would be a psychiatric unit there. And then we were left with Porter Stark. Well, they have a deal between Porter Stark and that hospital, and rest assured, they are failing the people of Porter County every single day. And frankly, I hold all of you accountable for that. There's one nurse that sits up at the county council. Have you examined what is going on with Porter Stark and the suicide rate in this county? I would hope that that would be of grave interest to you. There's also an opioid epidemic in this county. This county does not have a detox facility. Now, do you all know where those who need detoxing, who are suffering from substance abuse problems, end up? They end up in the county jail that is definitely not structured to help with detoxing people, but that's where they end up. So why not make sure that we put some of that money that's coming in, the federal taxpayer dollars, to save lives during this global pandemic, where so many people have died? Now, that's not the end of the story, right? There's other things. We don't have a homeless shelter in this county. We have some good Samaritans out there that are doing what they can to help homeless people. How about investing some money in some of these organizations or even building a county homeless shelter? Why on earth would you spend that much money for an addendum to what is essentially, no offense to everybody here, a very old vaudeville theater? By the way, I have a minor in theater. I love the theater. So no offense to the theater. I spent many years working in the theater, you know? But there are certain things that are way more important during a global pandemic, where we've had so many people die of this terrible, I guess you could call it a plague, okay, this terrible virus. We've had elderly people in the nursing homes die at astronomical rates. We've had people lose their job at astronomical rates. So, you know, theater is, you know, something that obviously touches all our souls. We love entertainment, we love arts, we love performances. It helps us escape the drudgery of daily life. But this county council has got to come up with real-life solutions for the drudgery of our daily lives that will end up saving lives. So I ask that you curtail the budget that you are allocating here, cut the $5.5 million, and look at what you can do just to preserve this building in the most effective, efficient manner, and in its historical context. I'm sorry, but they cannot, you know, the supporters cannot have everything they want. The federal taxpayer dollars should be used to save the most vulnerable, the most needy people in our community. And I really ask that you reconsider this proposal, because you will, trust me, get a lot of pushback from this from people, okay? People who are really suffering, just like this gentleman said. People are gonna ask questions, hey, what the heck is going on during a global pandemic? You guys are gonna be spending money to build an addendum that's really outrageous in cost? No offense here to the architects, but it is outrageous in cost, okay? And people who are in the theater, they are creative people, they can do so many things with what they have. The fact that we even have this is a great thing. And hopefully, down the line, when we recover from the global pandemic, when things really get better, Porter County should set its sights eventually on having a visual and performing arts center, something akin actually to what is in Monstree, Indiana, which is actually a beautiful venue. And that's eventually what we should be, you know, looking forward to in the next 10 to 15 years. So please, this is a global pandemic, people in crisis, please look into this situation with the suicide rate and look into what's going on with this woefully inadequate psychiatric services. $2 million are coming from this county to that Porter Stark, and they absolutely are failing the people in this county. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Oh, please have a date, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Schaefer. I'm a Vapariso resident and have been for 35 years. I was also a Porter County educator. Both my children grew up performing in this building. My son completed a collegiate internship here. Now in their 30s, both my children are enjoying successful careers in the arts, largely due to their experiences at the Memorial Opera House. I have been an Opera House volunteer since 2002. You probably haven't seen me serving in the front of the house. I'm usually cleaning, painting, or caulking to try to repair or preserve and maintain the beauty of this historic structure. I'm thankful that the county has the foresight to restore, renovate, and help revitalize this building. Scott McDonald, Stretch Miller, and the Opera House staff have been diligent and innovative in taking fresh approaches and utilization of this historical gem. Historically speaking, there were many people, I'm sure, against the renovations of our White House and of Duluth. Both structures are beloved and thriving. The Memorial Opera House and museum deserve the same attention. Thank you for going forward with this project.
Well, that ends, no, that's everybody that signed in, and I appreciate everybody's response. Really great feedback. We'll consider everybody's feedback, you know, as we move forward and communicate with commissioners. And, you know, a few points. Mental health has been a discussion, again, for the council and commissioners for a couple of years. Knowing that the bond with the jail was coming, you know, was being paid off soon, we were looking at space, you know, the need of what can we use that space for? You know, there's been a meeting with the sheriff and a number of other stakeholders. And there's money in this, the first round, that's proposed, you know, for us to allocate for a mental health study that I know Commissioner Biggs was, you know, had a lot of input on that, on that, the plan. And I, yeah, I can't not say enough about Councilmember Sims, you know, taking the lead on the suicide. He sat in a meeting and heard our coroner, and the guy has just taken off with that initiative, you know? He gives us updates, he lets us know what's going on, and he's just, what he's been doing has just been, you know, absolutely, you know, great for this county, you know? And so my imagination, I see it, is as this study goes out, you know, Greg will be part of that and to see where that fits in the study, and he'll help move, you know, that forward in this county. I think we all appreciate what you've been doing with that, absolutely. So again, that, like Councilmember Justin said, the mental health recently, because of COVID, it's definitely a spotlight on it now. So we're working on a lot of things in this county, and that is one that's part of it, and I appreciate those comments on that. Infrastructure, stormwater, the arts, all the above, the townships, you know, might say we need to, again, hopefully give them a second round, you know, of money on this to help them get to the people in need. A lot of great stuff that we heard tonight. I appreciate everybody coming out, you know, not just talking about the Opera House, but talking about other things as we open this up for input. I do appreciate everybody's input tonight, I think everybody does. So I know it's been a long night, appreciate everybody staying. I think we're three hours in, and that's great. So, but.
Go another hour.
Go another hour. So anybody from the council?
If I could, just, I wanted to ask. So I'll tell you, I think the first step in, this is a good, good step in soliciting feedback. I mean, we clearly have a specific plan in place for the first tranche of money from the ARPA, the ARPA funds, certainly understanding that not everyone's gonna agree with everything that was decided on or what we're moving forward with, and I wouldn't anticipate that we could get everyone to agree on anything, frankly. And so I think to give specific ideas and suggestions, suggestions, excuse me, is helpful for us, because we have a plan, we have ideas on what we've been working on for a number of years, and we're thankfully, to a point where we're getting toward the end of completing many of those things that we set our sights on, and we're crossing those things off the list and happen, and we're proud of the work that's been done. So we know another half of the funds are coming. We know we need to develop ultimately, as a county, you need to develop a plan in how that money's going to be spent, and I appreciate everyone who comes forward with, you know, a critical thought toward the plan we have in place. That's fair, and that's good, that's good dialogue. We also appreciate people who want to bring things forward that they think should be done instead. And we are open to any and all suggestions, and I can speak on behalf of the council, I believe I can, and also the commissioner's office as well, as we want to hear, hear from the people. So despite what some people may say, or despite what you might see on social media, I mean, we do want to know what's on your mind. So as we hear comments tonight about the lakes, Mr. Anderson pointed out the lakes issue. I have not, up till now, have not been aware of that particular issue. So that's great information, and certainly take note of it, and have every, you know, every intention to follow up with you to find out what that is, and we will work to correct whatever the problem, whatever the problem is. So that's very helpful. Mr. Ingram, obviously you have some very strong feelings about the Opera House construction process, and I know how experienced you are in the construction field, and I think we can no doubt include you in some of the discussions as to what can or should or might be done to ultimately even come up with a better project than we had originally anticipated. So I think we can welcome, welcome that dialogue as well. You know, and as long as we as a, as a community can, you know, discuss things openly and honestly and without a sense to go hypercritical prematurely, I think we can ultimately come up with what works best for, you know, the 175,000 people that we have here in. the 175,000 people that we have here in, in Porter County. We, we live in a great place. Can it be better? Absolutely. Can we take Porter County to the next level? Absolutely. And I think you have a commitment from the council and the commissioners to do, to do just that. So let's work together in a positive, productive, purposeful way and, and see what we can, see what we can accomplish. And to, oh, the young lady Reagan, where's Reagan? 14-year-old young lady who comes up and speaks before a group of people in the way that you did is most impressive. So we appreciate your feedback and your, and your comments very much. And we do want to hear from everybody, all ages, all walks of life, because it clearly, whatever we do has an impact, should have an impact ultimately on, on everyone. And where, who was in the Holiday Inn? He's back there. Just a personal, not a personal testimony, but a testimony from friends that saw the show this weekend. They thought the show was absolutely outstanding. They had one complaint, one complaint. And that was they couldn't believe how unbelievably uncomfortable the seats were. True story told to me, told to me yesterday. And, and he was struggling with the seats and said that an elderly gal that was sitting next to him was struggling even more. And for all of you tonight, certainly for the time that you spent there, you can probably appreciate that the chairs are desperately in need of being replaced. So we look forward to that. That is one of the most specific things that gets, gets done. So I appreciate the evening and appreciate your time and your willingness to come forward and provide ideas and suggestions. The more specific, the better. And doing it in such a positive way because I think ultimately we'll all be able to come together with a perfect plan for Porter County. So I thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? And, and another reason I, $80 million, over $80 million in this county. So, you know, we appreciate your input. We're not the only ones that has this money. So I, I think everybody, we need to make sure, you know, it's being put to good use. And maybe, you know, there's partnerships, maybe there's ideas out there that, you know, we received good tonight. Maybe the other units of government need that same input too, so, but.
I would just like to say that please, if you don't feel comfortable in coming forward and talking, put your ideas down on paper. Send us, send them to the council or the commissioners. If you don't know the address, just walk into the administration building. And there's always somebody there at the very front that could take it where, where you tell them to. And I appreciate everybody. You need to be very specific. I'd like to hear more about the, the great, the lakes out, out in the north part of the county. I've been invited out there to take a look at it and I think I'll be calling to do just that. And thank you all for coming out here today.
Thanks for hosting us. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and we'll see you in 2022. It's a motion.
Second.
Second on the table to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, sign aye.